It's recording.
Okay, we're ready. Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, June 12th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 6:05 PM. Please rise for flag salute. Mr. Stanton, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor Barberio, Ellen M. Sandman, Business Administrator, Yancy Wazermas, Township Clerk, Ann Cucci, CFO. The agenda of this meeting to the extent known is as follows: Review and discussion of the Mayor's 2015 Budget Recommendations. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on June 4th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. Copies of this notice appeared in the Daily Record on June 6th, 2015, and were faxed to the Star-Ledger and various other newspapers and local radio stations on June 4th, 2015.
Okay, Mr. Peluso, you requested that we start off with the revenue?
Yes, respectfully, Council President, I ask that we start with the current fund anticipated revenues, primarily to stay in line with the discussions that our Business Administrator had had when she first introduced the budget. She had mentioned about revenue streams and thinking about additional revenue and how we can create it for our municipality. I'd like to offer some review. Looking at the various services that we provide to the community and certain revenues that we accumulate, I realize that we are under budgeting in realized comparison to 2014. One specific example is the hotel tax revenue. We're budgeting very conservatively for $2 million on that line item for 2015, but in prior year, we realized $2,060,000. So, in those regards, I'd like to ask that we review that particular line item and we increase the anticipated 2015 hotel tax revenue.
To the max?
To, not exactly the maximum, but to the realized amount that we had last year.
Which was what?
Which was $2,060,000. So, to increase another $60,000.
What's the max it could be raised?
Up to the statutory limit of what we realized in 2014.
The what?
$2,060,721.
Okay, what does it stand now?
$2 million even.
No, what was collected last year?
Collected last year?
Is it $2,320,000?
Sixty?
$320,000?
Yes.
No, $2,060.
You're pushing that revenue to the max?
We're pushing it closer to maximum because that's what we anticipated.
So, if you don't collect it next year, then you're going to have a shortfall?
There could be a shortfall, but we don't anticipate a shortfall. We do have a number of projects that's happening right now, and they're anticipating the additional hotel as well, so...
Right, which will not come online until 2017?
It will come online later, but in regards to the hotel revenue, looking at the anticipated economy, we were able to lease several buildings recently, which could increase the travel between business partners. So, it's appearing to be positive in the sense that we may be able to attain not only what we achieved last year, but additional revenue that was unanticipated.
Right, and how are you anticipating to build up the current fund surplus? Fund, oh.
How do you anticipate building up the current fund surplus? Because that's where we have the issue. Your own auditor said that the $5 million, it needs to be up. Last year's budget, even with a $58.80 tax increase, which certainly this is not, that kind of budget, did not leave us enough. We really did not generate a good, comfortable level of surplus fund balance in the current fund, and that's what we were trying to do.
Overall.
So, we were trying to be, yeah, overall, and we were trying to be conservative, and we felt that this one could be an iffy one. Yes, looking forward, but the year 2015-16, on this particular one, I'm just, you know, you're going to go through others, I know, but I'm certainly not comfortable, and I don't think your own auditor is comfortable with this particular one. I mean, I'll certainly listen to others, and we'll certainly take a look, you know, because we have a couple hours here to go over some things, and certainly try to reach a happy, you know, a happy conclusion to, or a fiscally conservative but yet fiscally prudent resolve.
Okay. Quick question?
Go ahead.
So, you might be able to cut their chase, and we won't be here for hours, like we had earlier. How much of a difference were you trying to?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, right.
And what were we over right now with the budget? Was it two and?
Right now, if I could, Council President, would it be okay if I just did, I would like to have had just a moment of an opening thing, and I'll be short.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just so we all put our...
Yes, 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 okay. As I just said before, last year's budget, which did not provide much surplus in the current fund at all, fund balance, the auditor was very concerned. One of the things when he met with Ann and I over the course of doing the audit and also looking at the financial statement, he said, "You need to address this." So, that's why we were conservative, in particular with that line. The budget is a $65 million budget. Last year, you were at a $58.80 tax increase to a home of about $350,000.
That was for the year?
That's for the year. This year, we came in with a budget over the $990,000, which we know was not acceptable to neither council or administration, mayor, and, except for the auditor, he always likes it to be a little higher, but we weren't here to make Ray happy. So, anyway, we said that that's not an acceptable number, because at that point, it would have been over the 58, it would have been $69 per 95 cents. So, then, we took a look, and we started to take a look, as we said when we first met, we look at both revenue side, yes, we do, Rob, there's a two sides to the budget, revenue side and expenditure side or operating side, and we, Ann and I, and the auditor, and the mayor, felt that we were very comfortable with $626,878, that we felt that it was certainly down from last year. It certainly, there's numbers in here, as we talked about the ambulance service, that we know will be generating, generating us having shared service where we're going to make some additional money. I'll pick that one, because if you take a look at what even the increase will be, we'll still be at approximately 100, I'm going to just say a number, which is close, $125,000 to the good, which only can get better, because as we build this, and one of the things we also talked about when we talked about the ambulance services, for when I first came here, we talked about having to have a location, but I think Dean has, the fellow that's in charge of our ambulance service, and he's done a phenomenal job of trying to think outside the box and to not have to create a location, but to utilize the locations that we have, and he's already, he talked to that when he was here. So, I say that. So, but then the Finance Committee, we met, the mayor, myself, I had had conversations. Ray couldn't make that meeting, and he apologizes he couldn't be here this evening. He certainly will be here on Tuesday evening, but he said that he too was more comfortable with, you know, on a $65 million budget at the $626. But then, when we met, we came to terms with both Councilman Valori, Councilman, our Council President, the mayor, and we really looked at the budget, and we said, "Where can we really go? What can we really do to be fiscally prudent and be cautious and try to build some fund balance, even on a $65 million budget?" So, we took a look at revenue side, we took a look at the appropriation side, we're making one specific cut to the police department of $42,000. We made another cut of $58,000, which can be modified if you feel that there's something that you really feel it's something that we can have a discussion on, that maybe you should come from this, as opposed to where you're taking it from. That being said, when all is said and done, we're talking about $226,000, which is, comes to $17.15. I just say, we all worked really hard, and as you know, Brian, I see you looking at me, I said, "We even took right down to leasing cars to make a difference," and every $20,000, every $15,000 mattered. And together, we felt that that would be as low as you could possibly go, because I'm going to turn it over to Ann. There's something you need to know, and this will be our last thing when it comes to it. As we discussed, and we didn't have an opportunity to drill down on this, it's on paper, but it needs to be talked to, and that is, even if you go to zero, if you're, if you don't have $1 increase, you are below zero because of what's happening with what's trending. So, Ann, if you would just address what effect that has, and then we'll have no ability to really build anything back into our fund balance.
Yes, quite simply, as you know, the tax rate is a very simple calculation. It's how much you need to raise by taxes divided by the net value, your net value assessed value, which is, has been going down for many years. If I had done that tax rate sheet, you could see that in 2010, it was at 7,400, well, it's more than that, 7,400,000, and now it's down $300 million, okay? No matter what happens each year, even if you kept your tax and all your money, no change in that budget, it's still going to go up, because it's a simple dividing. You're dividing by a lower number, therefore, a higher result. So, last year, it did come down $6 million, okay? Therefore, your tax rate's going to go up anyway, regardless of what happens, regardless of what we do on this budget.
So, if we came down hypothetically?
If you come, if you left it the same, you're still going to raise taxes. It's not a lot, but you are.
All right, so, if we zero out the budget?
Right.
We don't want any increases. We have it to find that $225,000, right? Hypothetically, right? Have to make you smile here. So, then, what would be the increase?
I don't have that calculation, but I could do it.
Yeah, can you do that, so the public understands that too?
Right.
Because I don't think everybody realizes that.
One other thing, that's just on the municipal side, realize that the municipal side on a $350,000 home or assessed value, we're talking $17.15 a year, okay? That's a latte every quarter. That's how I look at that. Realize that the school tax is going up, we can't control any of that, the county tax, basically same.
I want to tell, so everybody here doesn't everybody know this, what's the percentage, roughly?
Yeah. Let me calculate that, too.
Oh, no, as soon as you say it.
Yes, yeah.
It's like, sit between 64 and 68 percent is school.
Yeah, oh, yes, I didn't know what you meant.
Oh, yeah, I knew that.
Yeah, it's like 68 percent.
Yeah, we know that.
When you're dealing with the numbers, that's where the money is. That's why, you know, people should go to those meetings, too.
Yeah, go to the...
No, I agree with you.
You know what I wanted to say, and this is just, this is 101, and then I'll be done, Paul, I mean, Council President. One of the things it is, can we find the money? Absolutely, we can find $226,000. And if we found it, I would then sign off and say, "Next year, don't," and next year is going to be October, November, because we will never find ourselves, our commitment, we will never find ourselves here again with this. Again, we're not going to say we just got here, blah, blah.
Absolutely, yes.
We promise that, we make that commitment. We'll be meeting with our department heads in October and November, and we'll see, there's only a short gap. We're already in June, we're already, half the year's gone, and we've been checking the revenues. If, in fact, you can always find the money, but then you have a Sandy, and then you have a hurricane, and then you have a catastrophic loss, that $220,000 will be eaten up, and then you're going to have a cap problem, and then you're going to have a, and I'm not the doom and gloom, I'm just saying, on a $65 million budget, knowing that in this budget are the things that you want to accomplish, like, again, I said it at the last council meeting, we want to address the needs of our blue collar workers, many of the council people up there, Brian has stated it, Paul has stated it, you've stated, you've all said, Rob, Mike, you said it to Greg. Greg, tell us, how many people that work for you, the blue collar guys that I just met with, and said, "In this budget, we are, the council has got numbers that will make a difference in your life, so you don't have to work a second job or a third job, just to make ends meet." We all know, we came here when we signed on, and, yeah, and I don't want to get into the benefits as much, but the benefits were paid for, so people did take a lesser salary. They were, benefits were paid, you know, to the tune of 100 percent. We're not complaining about, they're not complaining about paying their fair share, but look what has happened, and we have, we have great, some really phenomenal, great workers, and I know, when I met with them, I said, "In this budget, there's money to make that difference," and I had an in-depth conversation with Brian on that, so he knows it's in there. So, again, you can find money, you can tweak some revenues, you want to, you know, how low do you want to go? But I'm saying, as Ann said, we could change nothing and keep it flat, you're actually lower than when you have the 2% cap and you have an issue where you have a catastrophic loss, you have to pay salaries, and you have to pay overtime because of a storm or something. You can't, it's not prudent, it's not, it's beyond, it's not conservative, it's being, it's being wanton, I mean...
Now, I have to be positive here, because you gave me the positive information during this budget hearing. Our utilities aren't going to be doing better, like the golf course, you know, we wanted to bring...
Did you give out those sheets? All right.
Especially the driving ranges.
Yes.
I know, we're going to improve on the fog, so, you know, with the sewer, water sewer.
On the page...
We should be making money better than a lot of other towns.
Yes, absolutely. On the back of this, just, I know, on the back of this is the discussion on, remember we talked about the sewer utility, and we talked about the fact that they had raised the rates? Please read the top line, if you take that moment, to read that top line, it's going, the top line above the, you had asked Ann to put together the spreadsheet of where we were, what the towns were paying.
Yes.
Take a look, when it started, 2011, correct? 2011, we went now to 2014, we're talking about over $1,003,000 just on the rate change that are, that are, that we're paying. So, I wanted to show you, it already is happening, and it's only going to get better.
Which is better, yeah.
Yes, which is better. So, what you folks, together in our finance meeting, and I know we're here to talk with Mike also, and Rob, and Brian, who were not part of that, but we tried to give you the documentation of what transpired during that meeting. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to say, we're only asking for $226,000, which is a $17 increase, because we don't want to find ourselves, because it's a fluid document, it's a collaborative document, and when we collaborate on stuff, we all have to be on the same page of, you know, don't say, "Oh, why? Why didn't you tell us we were going to have a cap problem?" Because the less you add, the next time, you can only go up by this amount of money. So, we're very tight, this is a very tight...
But we still have our cap bank that we didn't use last year.
You'll have, yes, you'll have the cap bank.
We're beyond the 2%, then. We're at what? Because I know we were talking about that.
3% approved last year.
Yeah, because we voted on...
That's just a standard, everybody, and that's just, that helps, that helps the emergence, that helps the emergency, yeah, and that's, that will do that. But that's only, and that's a 1%, difference, but you still would have a cap, you still would, and I don't want to be the doom, I...
No, no.
This is a very good budget, this has things that will generate revenue, but I'm sorry to say, it won't generate it for 2016. I really see, build up by living with this budget and then building it into 2016, and hopefully being as tight as we can in 16 to see where we go and how we regenerate surplus. When we get into 2017, there's a lot of good, good things here, like you just said.
Ellen, in regards to, you know, being conservative, yes, we can be conservative on the anticipated revenues, but, you know, we can also be ultra-conservative. I'm saying is to meet somewhere in the middle, to not be as conservative, because we do...
And we did, we met somewhere in the middle to go from...
We anticipate more revenues coming in from other projects.
I think what Ellen's saying is to be responsibly conservative. You can be fiscally conservative, but if you're not responsibly conservative, we're going to have some issues, like one, for instance. If you are not going to generate enough surplus, I mean, fund balance, the rating agencies will look frowned upon you, because they look at your, they look at your fund balance as a certain percentage of your budget. So, basically, what will happen is, if they don't see that you have enough for emergencies, they will take your rating, and they will, they will downgrade you. And, but I think, I know what the BA is trying to say, is that if you take anticipated revenues and you try to increase them, and they don't meet that criteria, it's not going to look upon well, because the bond agency is going to say, "Well, wait a minute, why would you anticipate this amount of revenues when you know that you might not have anticipated?"
Because when you open up the book in 2016, before you do one new thing, for 2016, you have to defer charge, because you over, you underestimated that you were going to collect, you said you went right up to the thing, you didn't collect it, so you have to raise $20,000, $50,000. If you open up the book, you're already down $50,000.
Okay.
We're just saying, this is so...
No, no, I understand what you're saying, and I know, Mr. Peluso, he's trying to obviously, you know, nip this $225,000. How about, for example, I know there was one or two positions, because I'm trying to work with everybody here, I know with the, we were looking to hire that expert down in the water and sewer, who we didn't hire last year, and obviously, we're looking for somebody this year. Now, I know we're six months into the new year, so that salary anticipated of $100,000, we didn't use it, so there might be $50,000 or $60,000 there. Can we use that money?
That's in the utility.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Utility pays it.
Okay. It won't help, okay. Is there any positions like that, that haven't been filled, where, just so, you know, because he has concerns, and again, I'm trying to work with everybody here with this.
Yeah, there were some positions that have not been filled.
And we're halfway into the year, does it come out to a significant amount of money?
Well, what that would do is just go into reserve for next year, or go to the, it leaves you a little bit of leeway here, but remember, we have to raise it next year.
Yeah, but the only thing is, I would say with that is, I understand that, and again, I'm trying to work with everybody here, we would have already had to have that money in place for that year.
Yep.
So, you can't always think to say, "Okay, so-and-so decided to leave, gets fired," or whatever, "And then we're going to grasp that money and use it for another time." We were committed to really use that money for that year, just like on certain things for other, I don't want to say particular departments, we didn't use the money.
Right.
So, my point is, if we could satisfy his request, too.
What is, what is, can I...
Rob, what is your goal?
His goal is, he wants to be at a zero.
I think, I hope that it's still not zero after the conversation we just had. Please, please try...
Let me explain, you know, something...
Explain it, because I am so, you know, maybe, you know, I mean, we know that this is not a game, this is a sacred trust, that we all come to, come to this table on a Friday night to boot. I, in good faith with the Finance Committee, said, "Okay, your auditor's saying, no, you should be at $600,000. We're all saying we should be there, but we're saying in deference to you, in deference to the public, in deference to," I'm saying we're so, $226,000 is close to zero.
See, Ellen, on a balance-based budget, if we balance the budget, which I've talked about last year, and I talked about again this year, I want to see a balanced budget. You know, we have to start with the revenue section and see what we have as far as revenue. You don't spend more than what you have. So, if we have any type of increase, we're spending more than we have. Now, the issue here is, not that it's not a prudent budget, but when you look at the overall expenditures of the entire municipality, including the county open space tax, the library, the school, and the open space fire tax, you had everything together, you're looking at 2.7% as a tax increase overall for our residents. Now, let me, let me finish my conversation. If you go back to look on our records, we haven't had that high of an overall total base tax rate since 2002. So, for many residents, you know, what it comes down to is, we have to tighten our belts and tough economic conditions.
Last year, you had $58...
Respectfully, I heard what you said, Ellen, and now, let me speak, please. So, so, what I'm saying, basically, is that, you know, we're not looking at just the municipal tax, you have to look at the overall picture here. If you have the overall picture, you're going to be looking at probably two and a half tax points, possibly. You know, if you were not including sewer surplus for argument's sake, okay? We're taking a million and a half from sewer surplus, so we're taking the money, we're putting it back. So, what I'm saying is that even if it's a $117 increase overall, including the municipality, school board, everybody, just $117, it doesn't seem like much to myself, or you, or somebody else, but, you know, it could be one less purchase for a child. For a low to moderate income family, it's one grocery week, somebody's not buying groceries.
Okay, but...
Let me finish, excuse me. It's one month electrical bill, one month telephone bill, you know, car maintenance. People are giving up things in their lives. Matter of fact, I had my car repaired, and they said, "People aren't coming in to maintain their car, and they're letting it fall apart, because they can't afford it." So, what I'm saying is that when you look at the overall total base tax rate, when you're including everything, the library, open space, county, school, you're looking at 2.702 right now. So, we have to do our best.
Yes, but why should we balance the budget and the tax rate on the current? Why aren't we at the school board right now? That's where the money is.
The taxpayers need to voice their opinion there, as well.
Yes, we're on, we're $17, what are they, 80, 90?
It's not a discussion about other things we can't control, like the school board, it's a discussion about what we can control.
But you don't balance, you don't balance our budget on the back...
I never finished my conversation, I let you speak several times. With all due respect, it's, if it's an election year, I seen our budget balanced, I seen a 0% tax increase.
I disagree with you.
It's not an election year right now, but if we can balance our budget, hey, I gave up my 2% increase for council for the last two years in a row, okay? I'm leading by example. You know, I'm looking to cut whatever I can and anything I can control. You know, if I'm giving an increase, why should, why should I get a tax increase myself?
Can I ask you a question? What do you see for next year?
Next year, we see a higher anticipated revenues based upon discussions of department heads and how great they're doing.
But you're leaving nothing in this, you're going to be in trouble going forward. I have to be honest with you, trying to cut, 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 cut in half these people, every little place...
Well, I'm not saying cut, I'm saying less, we're talking about revenues right now, I'm not even talking about cuts.
But there is, I got to tell you, I agree with you, I understand, but I'm going to tell you, I just did a quick math on where we are in the hotel tax. If I extrapolate that out, we're at $1,999, okay? Taking the past, yeah, five months of, as of today, I mean, it may go up come the summer, it may go down, I don't know, but if I extrapolate the average, I'm at $1,999, so, we're...
No, I, I understand what you're saying. My opinion, I'm not... I'm with you in regards to you not touching, obviously, the revenue side of the house of what we're anticipating, okay? But at the same time, I understand what Mr. Peluso's saying, and that's why we're all adults, nobody has to take it personal, and that's why I just...
No, it's not personal.
No, no, no.
No, it's not personal, this is a business question.
And that's why I just ask, is that if there are some spots that we would have been paying now, and that would have been budgeted for, right? And it's nice to have that, that money there.
To move forward to a balanced budget, to have something.
Yeah, or do we, or do we go to each department and say, "Okay, you're not going to get that much mulch around your building this year, so, we're going to take $2,000 or $5,000." I mean, we could do that, but I'm just, I think he's just trying to look at areas overall of what could be easier and smoother for everybody. That's all.
All right, let me speak, please. First and foremost, I know you're going with hard economic times, so if the economic times are hard, how can you even anticipate higher revenues in the hotels since economic times are hard? Companies are struggling, you said, you said, so, you can't...
I'm not saying that.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying on the whole. So, does the economy only affect certain people? Does it affect everybody?
Okay, just again, just for the record, my concern about that, I'm not touching. I'm fine with what everybody had stated with your ideology with that. I know that our authorities are going to improve, okay? And I have no problem with that, and I think we're going to, the town's going to be healthy. Our biggest thing is, I think the value right now we're looking at is $225,000, okay? If, so, everyone is pleased moving forward, is that there's one or two positions or areas that we increased funding for?
I don't mind if I interrupt it, can I ask you right now? Mike, please.
Your mic.
Can I, can I please ask, in deference to someone that has really done this for a long time, it's different, corporate is different than municipal, and I know you've been a good study, and, you know, you've worked hard to, you know, gather this in. Where, other than zero, because zero is less than zero, with knowing that there's a very good chance of a cap problem, and other than, where, where would you be comfortable to be supportive of this budget, besides zero?
Well, since I made my point clear last year, and we had a year with the administration to improve, I said zero last year.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm still saying zero.
So, even though we went with the new administration, from 58 dollars down to 17 dollars, and built into this budget, taking care of our blue collar workers.
Which we asked for.
Which you asked for, and it's in there?
Yes.
Okay. We asked for, we're supportive of the library because of, we said in past years, they had given more, we compromised on how much more we could still give them without hurting them, and we, that's in there. As you know, and just so I state it, because everybody always wants to go, like you do, to capital, I mean, to, yeah, the capital, it doesn't really help us in current, so some of those things that I said are all in this current budget. So, by saying to you, just as you're saying, you're at zero, well, and I'm not, this is not, this is not being curt, I'm at really 600,000 dollars, to be honest with you, because I'm not comfortable at 226, but I'm going to do my darndest to absorb, to say, to say, okay, and when you finally get that guy that we, the assistant that really is, has a little bit more money, you know, there's 40,000 dollars there, there's this, as I said, we can cut this, but what are you going to be left with? Are you going to be, will you stand up and say, wow, zero is not a number in a, in a budget that has many moving parts with no guarantees? I am confident that we are going to, it's going to be good, but I, I don't think we're asking for much, we're asking for, what is that? We know 716,000 dollars is a tax one. What's 226 on 65 million dollars?
But we're not really sure at 226,000. You know, if there's, there's different of opinions when you look at the sewer surplus, you're taking a million and a half dollars from sewer surplus, that's about a million 726 of a shortfall, that's 2.4 tax points.
Yeah.
So, if, if we weren't generous as a council to say, okay, then we will allow the sewer surplus to be in there to reduce our taxation.
Right.
You know, I don't know where we would be, we would be with a significant tax increase.
Okay, so, are you saying that you want to then put that back? You want to go, you want to add 300,000 dollars to this?
What I'm saying is, a million and a half, if.
I understand that, but you want to add 300.
If the council agrees with a million and a half, we're bringing it down to 17 dollars, and that's money we already collected and taxed everybody on. So, we're using the sewer surplus in order to balance our budget here, a million and a half dollars.
Part of it, because it's part of the revenue.
But that's kind of significantly, in 2013, we used 550,000 dollars. We're quadrupling that.
The conversation was, and it was the conversation with the, with the whole finance committee, that over the years, 750,000 dollars was used, we also made the conversation that when, years passed when the sewer utility was in bad shape, it took from the current fund, and now, it's time to spread that all out. Okay, so, then tonight, you're saying, we have to go, we have to find, so it won't be 226, because I can't have zero, it'll be a zero, but I can't have a negative number, because if you think you're going to have trouble.
Balance the budget is what I'm asking for, as soon as I ask.
Anne, can I ask you one question before you do anything? A zero, I know zero doesn't mean zero. What does zero mean financially per head?
Well, I'll just say, I just want to say one other thing. On the municipal tax is only 14 dollars, the municipal itself and the budget you're looking at, because there's also an increase in the library, there's an increase in the fire district. I can't fix that, so.
That's, that's.
But, hear me out, that's part of that 17 dollars. So, we're at 14 dollars here.
So, really, we're at 14 dollars?
If I went down, and the effect of going down on the net valuation is about 3 dollars, okay? On 1715, so right then and there, it's 3 dollars that we're down to begin with, plus the fact the library went up and the fire district went up, so now.
Which is out of our control.
Yeah, we have no control.
We can't control those items. So, what I'm saying is, just control the portion that we can control.
It's 14 dollars. It's 14 dollars.
So, right now, it's 14 dollars a house.
That's it, because what I did was, I added in the library, I added in the.
Right, yeah, right.
But if we took away the 226, I'm just telling the number, what would it cost per head, because it's not zero, we were talking.
It's zero on the municipal side.
Zero on our side.
On the municipal, our side.
But there's still increases in those other areas which is out of our control.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So, let me, let me just ask you one question.
Sure.
How many positions, because we're halfway, this is crazy how we do these budgets, we're halfway.
I know, we don't want to.
We're six months in.
I know, six months. I know, so let me ask you a question. Okay. I know, how many positions did we fill, right?
Yes.
What was the true value of those positions to budget for the year, because we had a budget in this year?
Right.
That we didn't fill, and there should be half of that money left over. Should it cover that 226, so we can move on with this?
And I said to you.
As in, I said to you early, I can find, now I'm going to hit myself in the head, I can find two 226,000 dollars, and then, yes, I know, I can find 400, but, but you're going to put, you're going to, you're going to jeopardize the financial wherewithal of this community. I don't, I can't wrap my head around the want of 200,000, even if you want it, we'll cut 26, if you want to talk about 200,000 dollars, on 65 million dollars, and to put us in jeopardy, those numbers move over into fund balance, I don't get to spend them.
The thing is, when you, the thing is, and I know your heart's into this, and we are too, but the reality is, for those positions that are not filled right now, we know each year always happens, positions are not filled, and.
Take the police, six guys, I mean, whatever the guys, you know, whatever, six guys, you put 35 plus all the uniform, cut that in half, it's already June, by the time you'd hire them, it's September, October, November.
And we're still not factoring.
We know that, yeah.
And we're still not factoring for those positions, what we're putting for medical and everything else, so there's even more money that's saved. But at the end of the day, we budgeted for those positions, and we had a responsibility to fill, obviously, those positions and provide the funding for it. So, when you look at it, we're not doing any injustice to the town. Now, obviously, you know, you budgeted for, okay, X, Y, and Z, now, half of them are not there, so.
And that's what helps build that fund balance.
Yeah, but, okay, but here's my, okay, but here's my other point, here's my other point. So, if I am looking at this, right, and I'm saying, okay, there's five positions, it's a quarter of a million dollars, right, that is going to make the council happy, okay?
Are you going to be happy next year?
Okay?
Yeah, next year is going to be a problem.
I think so, because if I'm asking that on five, I'm sure there's probably several other hundred thousand dollars out there that it's not being used, or hasn't been used in the past. So, my point is, there's other money that's probably out there.
And that's in fund balance, that's in fund balance.
And since, and since we've talked, I predicted that when we put the gas money and we put it down, has anybody noticed, it's gone up, and it's gone up. So, I'm just saying, this is a fluid document, for the want of giving us a little bit of flexibility, and I agree with you, there might be another 200,000 dollars in there, which I would love to see that 426,000 dollars going forward into 2017's fund balance.
The only thing that I'm very confident about, there's Paul in the back there, I know she's back there, I think that our utilities are going to do a great job next year.
But that has nothing to do with current fund?
Okay, yeah, I know.
In a way, but you got to realize that, if you do that, I still have to raise it next year. What are you thinking, that's why I said, what are you thinking for next year? We're not going to be at zero, and you're narrowing the gap.
We're going to worry about next year in October, as we discussed in October, start talking about.
Well, it's only, first, plus, let me tell you, we're in July. Let's get this, you know, if you want to cut those people in half, that's fine, but next year, you got to raise it.
Okay, here's, here's another thing, it's two, hold.
You've got to raise it.
If you had 100 people in here right now, 200, and I'm trying to work with everybody here, I would say, out of those 200 people that would show up here that live in the town, they're going to say, I don't care, I don't want to increase. I know that people don't realize that the fire department, the library, that's an increase that's built in there, but if you're going to, if this is going to go all over 200,000 dollars, I think kind of like, we're spinning our wheels, and we're very fortunate, when you think about it. Think about this, though, if we didn't have that million and a half dollars from our utility, we'd be laying off people here in the town, there's no doubt, am I right, Jamie? You wouldn't be getting improvements.
I'm going to.
But, you wouldn't be able to do any improvements.
You wouldn't get the services, it's the services that would be cut.
So, I, you know, the only thing is, fair to Mr. Paluso, and I'm just trying to be fair to everybody, if this is the only thing that we're really arguing about is 225,000 dollars.
It's not arguing.
Well, not arguing, or debating, debating, not arguing.
It's the principle, it's not only the money, it's the principle, because it's a mistake, I got to tell you, from my, I've been doing this a long time, Ellen, even longer, this is what, no, can I finish?
Yeah, okay.
Not personal.
There's a couple other increases here I was going to mention, go on.
No, I just, please, you're making a huge mistake by not doing this. It's fiscally irresponsible not to raise this a little bit, to go forward, to build your fund balance a little bit, this isn't even going to build your fund balance, it's going to keep you maybe status quo. We need to do this for the future. I'm much more comfortable with the 600.
Well, we didn't talk about other revenue ideas either.
We're not, this is too close, Robert.
All I did was, I started the conversation by asking if we can increase the anticipated revenues based upon what we.
I realize that.
Achieved in 2014.
But if I don't.
I don't really touch into cuts or anything about that, we just talked about revenue, and in line with the conversation that Ms. Sandman started in the beginning of these processes, we said, how can we raise more revenue?
I realize that.
So, I'm questioning as to why the revenue is under anticipated by a significant amount.
It's not by a significant amount.
It's being concerned.
It's 130,000 dollars, I see, between the Amblin Hotel and Community Center. You know, the Community Center, if we, if we're not collecting the same rental on it, then I can see you dropping it, but from our conversation today, you had mentioned to me that we're still achieving the same amount in rental from the Community Center. So, if we are, and the revenues remain consistent, then why aren't we bringing it up to be consistent on the budget?
Well, as I said, it's a fluid document, and as luck would have it, you picked the PAL, and, right, and he came in, not the Community Center, but we had the other, PAL is looking for some additional help, because they're, they're losing revenue, they're losing, they're losing revenue, and they're looking to us, because, again, it's parcyphony, and it's, you know, yeah, yeah, they're losing, yeah, losing to the school, so.
So, what was your anticipated, what was your goal at the end of the day, okay, because there's positions not being filled, obviously, there might be other savings.
Yeah, the 226,000 that we discussed in the.
But how much more would have been there as a fund balance, because you're saying that you're trying to build your fund balance?
Well, I don't think we're going to get to the fund balance amount on a 226,000 to get, to rebuild up that fund balance, we're at 5 million dollars, let's say, okay?
We're at 5 million dollars now, you're saying?
Yeah. So, I don't believe we're going to build anything on this budget.
Okay, but 5 million dollars in your fund balance, is that a, an amount that's not to satisfaction?
Your auditor is not happy with 5 million dollars, he said that, because when we, yeah, on the current fund, because.
What is his recommendation?
Because he didn't tell us the recommendations, I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear that during the audit process, I didn't hear anything about this till today.
Now, I'm only going to be fair to you about the fund balance, I, okay?
All right, all right. Usually, if, if, I don't know if you can give me this number, but I've worked with Ray as an auditor in Denville for many years, and his rule of thumb is, when you open up the books, because you don't collect your taxes until February 1st, even though, you know, they're due January 1, February 1st is when we do, so you should have cash on hand, he said, for the full payroll, do you know what?
Specifically, how much did he ask for this time?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, 5 million dollars seems like a sufficient amount, and we do have.
On 65 million, it's not that, it's not that significant, we will have.
Well, then, what is his recommendation percentage of a 65 million dollar budget?
It would be, when you open up the books on January 1, that you can pay your entire payroll for the month.
Yeah, but let me ask you a question, how long have we been at a insufficient fund balance? Because you're saying it's 5 million, right?
I don't know that answer, I can, I can only, yeah, but I'm just going to go back and say.
So, I'm going to use what you're telling me, you're telling me that we have to have a full month's payroll.
Yeah.
So, our payroll is what, per year, 33 million dollars?
It's high, I don't, I got to look at the number exactly.
Oh, that's just one thing.
It's just.
That's just one, not just payroll.
So, so basically, this 226,000.
So, we cut her more than a month's payroll.
You want it at 500, 226, 5 million 226,000 for your fund balance?
I don't know what the percentage of your budget is, I don't know what the percentage of your budget is that, we'd have to actually speak to Ray, that he would like to see surplus in, but let me just say this one fact, that it's important. You're saying you're conservative, but yet, you want to be liberal with increasing the amounts of revenue. We're trying to be conservative, saying, oh, wait a minute, it might not be this, you know, and I understand what you're coming with, with the hotel tax, but if you don't meet those, those revenues, you're going to pay for it in 2017.
We'll have to have an emergency appropriation.
Or 16,000 to 7, you're going to. And, and I know, you've been here in at the county for the last, how many years in a row, had a 0% tax increase, well, that's going to come to roost eventually.
No, and, and, listen, by and large, I am pleased with the budget, and I am not trying to attack, or overestimate or underestimate what you put down for your revenue estimates. And then, again, hopefully, our utilities will do much better. What is news to me, and don't take it personal, was the 5 million fund balance that Ray Severnelli, which he did not say anything to the council.
I would like to know the magic number now, what he feels is a reserve balance.
Yeah, I want, I'd like to know, because I'll be quite frank with you, now, let me finish.
It's not a magic, don't say a magic number, because it's not a magic number, it's an arbitrary number.
And Mr. Kovalcheck, you know, for the record, the old CFO, unfortunately, sent us astray with your logic of doing things and his. So, you got to remember, we, we're, we're obviously getting information from the CFO, dealing with contracts, dealing with how to deal with the budget, he was totally against the utilities, you know, now, we're sitting down with you guys trying to rational, which we don't have. Alls I'm saying to you is, listen, if there's positions, we're halfway into the year, that we budgeted for salaries, which are part of this budget, you're not, you had to provide that money for those, for those.
No, you don't know.
All right, Mayor, I'm just going to say something, okay? If you're saying, and you were all saying that you'll vote for a budget on, you'll vote for a budget on Tuesday, because, I mean, we're done, I would, I would respectfully say to you, and I will say this on the record, that you're saying to cut, I'm asking, I don't want to cut what I have to pay the fire district, and I don't want to cut what I have to pay the library, are you okay with that?
Well, you can't cut the library, because that's, and the fire district.
I know, it's a, it's, I know, it's a formula, it's the Mills formula.
Explain what you're trying to get to, what, what do you?
I'm trying to say to you, what of 226 are you comfortable with, that gets me to pay something that I have no control over? We have fire districts that we pay, and we pay the library under a Mills formula, the Mills formula is based on the state. Anne is saying it's approximately 3 dollars.
3 dollars and 15 cents.
Well, disrespect to answer your question, is, is you're the administration, you deal with the budget on a day-to-day basis, because you know your departments, your department heads, some department heads, you have to ask for sacrifices, they have to cut back. We do not see inventories of what they have as far as material, we don't know what their level of inventory is, whether it's for oil, or gas, or anything else, so we have to utilize your experience and your day-to-day management as the administration. We just can't spend what we don't have, because the overall budget, including, if you're looking at the revenue, if we have the revenue of X, but we're spending Y, and we have a deficit at the end, that means we increase taxes on the municipal side, okay? So, what I'm saying is that, we're using your, using, Anne, what you said, is we're riding, we're riding the ship in the right direction because of a number of years that we had some problems. So, last year, I did express the fact that we were trying to balance the budget, we really would have liked to see that. Obviously, the council approved that budget, but now, it's, it's another year we're into right now, and we thought the ship would be righted by now, to the extent that, you now and we thought the ship would be righted by now to the extent that, you know, we could have a balanced budget as we do in election years.
Well, my question is to you, a balanced budget, you know, it's a question, what is that? I mean, you know, it's going to, it's going to have to go up $3.15.
Let me see if I understand what's going on here, okay? You CFO and the administrator, and the mayor, have put together a budget you feel is prudent. It's as low as you can go and still protect what will happen next year, okay? And it's along the guidelines that the auditor said you should follow. And if we don't do this, we could also jeopardize our bond rating.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question too?
Don't, don't.
Mike, are you done? Before I ask, I don't want to jump on you. I wanted to ask a question, are you done?
Well, let me get an answer to my question, okay? I mean, I haven't said anything all night, but listen, all your banter back and forth. You should not be cutting the budget, is what I'm hearing, okay? They've made it as lean as they can and still protect next year. Now, what is so difficult to understand? I don't know.
Well, I would say one thing is that I spent time with the finance committee meeting and if we'd have made the decisions in regards to using money from the utility, $1.5 million, plus sitting down and taking a big chunk from the police department and others, we wouldn't even be at this $225,000. So, alls I just said again, and I don't know why I keep going on and on about this, is that if you budgeted money for four or five positions and we're already halfway into the year, okay, those salaries would have been paid for anyway. So, if you're taking the six months that you haven't used, and I'm sure there's probably close to $200,000, we could put this to bed right now because you're not putting anyone in jeopardy because you had the money there budgeted for those positions.
And that's correct.
So, it's like, the mayor, the salaries budgeted.
It's about next year.
Okay.
My question is, when you went into the finance committee, because again, I was not there, I only got the report after, what was the dollar amount when you started?
It was $990,000.
And you're then at $226,000.
$990, please. $990,000.
We cut it down to $226,000.
We then said when we...
Which to me, sounds like a great job, so...
Yeah, it was, I thought we had agreement.
Can I, no, it wasn't $500,000. $300,000. The explanation that you're giving with the salaries, what Mr. Valori is trying to say is, it's halfway through the year. We haven't paid those salaries. But if we were to take that out now, come next year, we're starting with only half of that salary for that position. So, if you have somebody, let's say their salary was $50,000, it's halfway through the year, so if you cut it down to $25,000, in going into next year's budget, you only have that $25,000 for that position. So, you have to increase it next year for $25,000 to get it to the 50.
Okay. Last year, we did not fill that $100,000 position at the sewer treatment plant.
And thank God you didn't because, oh, no, the sewer position, no, that didn't give us any money.
That's a utility.
Okay, I know it's a utility.
You didn't fill the police position later. That money went, it might have been what the...
Oh, that money will go into fund balance, not for this year, it's the second year. So, it goes into 2016. So, I'm kind of glad you didn't fill all those positions, the police positions. The way the budget works is when you have money that is not utilized at the end of the year and all the bills are paid, you have a whole year because something could have got lost and that. So, in 2015, after that year is up, we still can pay out of 2015, if it was a legitimate cost in 2015, during 2016. At the end of 2016, whatever truly now is left, goes into fund balance for 2017.
Okay.
So, it compounds it. Brian, just, just on the numbers, because you lived, Paul and you had an opportunity to live them. You've only got a copy of what were the bullets. We went into that room at $990,000. When we sat down, I said, before we start, we have already worked pulling down from not touching any more revenue side, the operating side. We went from $990,000 down to $600, $626,000. So, I appreciate where you're going because I just want to tell the rest of the story. We walked in, we were at $990,000. We said, we already did on the, on the operating side of the current budget, we reduced it, not out of revenue, for the most part, right? No revenue. We're down another, say, $300,000. So, then together, the council president and the liaison in lieu for the finance committee, the mayor, myself and Ann, we started to talk and drill down, as you say, you looked at revenue, you said you felt there was a comfort level to go to the $1,005,000. And then we cut, we cut the other 100 and whatever it was, 43, 42 from the police, right out of the arms one. And then we have $58,000 that we have cut and, you know, if there's certain areas, that's what I was saying before. Okay. That all being said, we're down to 220, uh, 226. And everybody learned something. You know, we talk about a number, we're talking about 17, 15. I now will never forget it, but, you know, we have fire districts here. I'm not, I have not had a community that had a fire district, so in my budget, it was always included. So, you have a number there and you have a number with the library, what's called the Mills formula, based on, you know, your, the value of the town, there's a formula that says X amount of percentage of that, you're obligated to give that to the library. You know, you don't have, you can't give them any less than that particular amount of money. So, that being said, as you said before, there's, there's strict covenants here and I'm glad you went to take a look at the overall picture. But, just like I can't control those two. Now, the council president is picking up on the fact that it's, it's a compounding effect as you get into the, into the, in next year and...
But that's where I'm, you're, I'm not tracking with you with this. Right now, if we budgeted, okay?
Correct.
I hired you as a new CFO for $140,000. You started January 2015, but you don't start until July of 2015. So, you're really only getting half of that salary budgeted for you.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, now here...
So, we already approved the budget for $140,000, but in essence, we only owe you $70,000.
Correct.
So, there's $70,000 left over. Or if we don't fill the position where those positions are not filled, not only do you have that $140,000, you have obviously the other benefits that go with it. So, there, there's a surplus of money there.
Sure.
Okay, so, where I'm still getting confused on...
But council... It's the next year that's a problem. Now, you have to raise, you have to raise $140,000.
No, 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 because you already approved your, your budget.
No, no, but you're...
Oh, I know what you're saying. You're going to...
Right, we're pulling it.
What council president said it best. We have to now raise another half a salary next year. You have a budget cap. You're going to run into trouble with the cap. Because if you keep, if you...
So, if you, if you had the $50,000 salary, we didn't fill it for the first six months. So, now we only need $25,000. So, for this budget, if we say, okay, we're only going to approve $25,000 for that position because we only have it for the first, last half of the year, now come January next year, that person's back to 50.
But you can't approve the position for the entire year in advance?
Well...
Because we're technically, the way we're doing this budget...
Well, it is approved. It is approved.
We're not funded.
Right, it is approved, but we'd be cutting it to 25.
Because we're so late into this budget.
I know.
This is really convoluted.
And I agree with you. I'm just concerned about...
The thing is, it gets compounded when you go into the next year because, yeah, you use it for the balance of this year, but now you've got to raise another half of that.
But we wouldn't have it.
So, I guess you're going to have to go line by line if I'm still ahead of...
We're going to have a budget cap problem, I believe, with something like that. I mean, you're talking maybe one salary, but...
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but come next year, then we'd have to make up those, half of those salaries.
What's your goal next year? Yeah, you have to look at the budget over kind of a three-year period.
But you're, but, but these positions are not, and here's another problem I have, is that if we're purposely not filling positions, okay? Hold on. No, I just want to try to say, I just, I just like to know what positions that we didn't, okay? It might not, you might not like the word, but if it's six months into the year and we did not fill positions and there was a $1 million worth of positions there and now we're approving that budget for those positions, we're going to be getting the money funded for it and then if we don't fill them, the money goes back into, obviously, surplus.
Quite balanced on 2017.
Yeah. So, now, yeah, we're going to be budgeting for the following year, but I want to make sure at the same time that we know what we're budgeting for or approving, those positions are being filled.
Sure.
So, I think an answer to us would be is, how many positions do we fill and how much is it? What's the worth of it?
Um, one of the, one of the ones, to show you an example, it is a good question. But I'll give you an example of, of just human beings and the course of events. Ann is here since September. Her, she's so understaffed, it's not funny. She has not yet filled a position because she hasn't had the time to lift up her head to interview someone to be the assistant finance director. Katie, when Katie left, that position was never filled. She has two great gals down there, way, 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 overworked. She finally, finally was able to get the third person and that person isn't even here yet because they have to give notice and so, yeah, so you're right, there's money there. But that's what happens. It's not because we're not trying to fill the position to save money to build fund balance.
But you know what I mean? No, I understand that, but we are acting in good faith, thinking that positions are being filled.
And they are, for the most part, they are. There's not going to be, there's not going to be, the police are the one, you know, the six positions there, a couple of positions in Ann's office and for the most...
Okay, the other question I have for you is this, how much did we increase in, which is always a hot topic with us, with the legal? How much more did we put into legal?
Okay, it's on that paper, the sheet. It shows you where the money is. Yeah, and all those numbers are pretty stark. I think the only was, the only one was the additional $20,000, I think, if you look at it. It's on the sheet here, on the bottom. It says, legal fees includes, and these, we just thought we'd give you a smathering of what, what gets spent. Includes general, general matters, tax appeals, construction, a board of appeals, housing trust fund, FEMA, COA, and what's out of current is 702, what's out of construction is 6, water, you see water sewer and the Knoll. Those three really don't, they matter because that's how much we spent on legal, but they're coming out of your utility. So, that's pretty much your, yeah, you wanted to see the total.
And the other question would be, besides the legal, for insurance, how much do we have in there as a surplus for catastrophic incidents? I know that was something that Roy, don't we have like a balance there? Because I know Mr. Meswier was talking about that. How much money is there, say?
I'll say, we're going to be doing, starting that, getting ready for that reserve, that medical reserve we talked about, that dedicated. I would say it's pretty tight because we use some of it, maybe a million at the most, but that's not a lot in this. It's very tight.
And what do we use that money for in the past? We took money from there?
Well, usually, we use that reserve for the following year. We use it depending what we need to do and Ray wrote us up for and said we have to do that dedication by rider, which we are going to be doing, and put some of that money away for when, if we become not self-funded. Part of the problem is, we got lucky this year because we had a good year, but if we have catastrophic anything, we need to pay for it out of cash. So, we're building that up a bit and that'll be coming...
All right, so, so for insurance, we have about a million, you said, right?
I would say a million, but we have to have that in there. I'm hoping for a million.
In our fund, you said there was $5 million sitting there?
It makes me remember the numbers. That's the, sir, fund balance.
Fund balance.
Current. This is a separate...
No, I know that. So, the fund balance is $5 million?
Yeah, and that has nothing to do with it.
And that's...
But Ray said that should be actually more. But you didn't tell us what it, the number.
It was not a number.
I mean, he wasn't saying it was, it wasn't really a number, it was more like, you know...
We'd like to see it higher.
He'd like to see it higher, so would the bonding agencies. So, I mean, you know, a number on 65, I mean, I've had smaller budgets and had healthier fund balances.
So, I'd like to know, what is that arbitrary number that he's telling us that we should have as a surplus fund balance?
So, now it's, okay, don't take it wrong, now it's being opinionated, meaning it's his opinion.
Yeah.
Because you've got to remember one thing, and I know we're, we're kind of getting rattled here a little bit, but you've got to understand where we came from last year. We had meetings that went to 1 o'clock in the morning.
I know, we're not...
But, but...
Here's the thing, can, can the council president take a barometer? You say you want it in deference to your collaborator, you know, cohort, whatever, your...
You said it, sir.
Nice, I meant, I meant nice, I meant, you know, in reference to your peer.
There's no collaboration, let me clarify.
I didn't mean collaboration. No, no, I meant, no, let's not get, no, we're not going to wordsmith. No, don't wordsmith. Wait till I finish and you're going to say, oh, wow, that makes sense what you just said. No, I meant, you know, your peer. Thank you, council president. Me, I'll look at...
All right, but just, one other thing before you go, take your little poll, is this, the insurance, okay, which a million and you feel that should be more in the near future, $5 million, fund balance. There was one thing, where are we at with the amount that we have in our utility with the water sewer? What is it that we have as a surplus right now down there?
Sewer surplus.
The sewer surplus.
Sewer surplus is about $9 million after we take the...
So, we're doing good then?
Yes.
All right, so be positive here, we're doing good, okay?
The sewer utility is great, the water utility, and, you know, they use the phraseology, self-supporting and self-liquidating. Our water utility, very, I think it's $5 million.
All right, so, we basically have $16 million sitting out there, altogether.
Which you can't legally take.
So, I know, but you're telling me you can't bring this down to $245,000?
Okay. No, no, what I would like to say, in deference to the team that works 24/7 here and, you know, because we care, council president, with, can, can we come to some terms instead of being here till 11 or 10 o'clock? Can we take, pardon me?
I'm ready, we got sandwiches.
Oh, yeah, no, but the, the air conditioning. Is there, is there a number, not, maybe not 226, but certainly not 0, that we can come to a compromise? You know, what's, what's, what's a number between 0 and 226?
Well, I, I think I can answer my own question on that, is if I knew exactly what the surplus number was that Ray is asking, I can back into that number. As I know what the revenues are, I can back into the expenses as well. But my other question is, how long does it take to regenerate the one and a half million dollars we're spending from sewer surplus?
One year at the most. One year, one year. We've already, yeah, we just showed you a million three already just came in.
A previous CMFO told me that it's a million dollars in one year that we regenerate, but we're taking a million and a half now.
A million three. Take a look at your sheet, it's a million three. To be honest, can I just say something overall about, I just want you to think of the big picture a little bit, not only for next year. We are trying to get a AAA bond rating. This is not the way to do it. A zero budget is not the way to do it, okay? So, it's just... Because they want you to raise rates slowly. They don't want you to slam the people at the end. They see deficit spending, that's a down two.
They are not the families that have to pay the tax bill at the end of the year.
Yeah, but no, 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 no. The result of a AAA is lower expense for your bond. You get a lower rate...
Yeah, but, but let me ask you a question.
And I'm... Go ahead.
No, no. No, because you...
Well, if you have a better bond rate, then you have the ability to go out to bond sales, to get to lower your debt service, to get, these are the things where we want it, want to be able to do. And I think what Ann's trying to say is that the rating agencies aren't going to look, they're going to frown upon having, not to even be able to generate the fund balance the way...
So, let me ask you a question. What if your utilities, and I'm hoping, the Knoll Country Club?
Yeah, and that's what's happening.
Okay? I'm hoping the sewer treatment plant with the fog and all that stuff, but what if you're generating such profits, okay? And you know these are just cash cows that are going to do wonderful things to the town? And why would you even want to have an increase in taxes? Because now you're worried about the bond rating? I mean, aren't you there to bring in money? That's what's getting me confused here, because, you know, if you're bringing in revenues that are going to help you balance your budget to not raise taxes at all, hopefully on the municipal level, then why would you want to put that, that, even a slight increase there?
Well, as Ann said at the last meeting at the budget, one of the things, the reason why there is so much surplus, and it's a great number in sewer...
Hey, I mean, I'm happy that we have...
However, however, we have to pay debt service. It's built up because you haven't paid and you want to, you become fiscally conservative. The bond ratings will love that, that we're paying down out of that surplus our bonds because they went out and bonded things and you're supposed to be paying it off and we want to be very aggressive with that.
What's our surplus for the sewer department debt for bonding?
Well, yeah, well, that's one of the things we want to do once we're done with this, is to be able to analyze each of the utilities and the, and the current fund, the actual
is to be able to analyze each of the utilities and the, and the current fund, the actual debt, and let's see how we can pay down and really design where we're going. We got thrown into this a bit. Obviously, 2013 and 2014, none of the books were done when we got here, and then we had to put this together and an audit. You got your audit, we got your budget, and we're going to start this budget for the next year in fifteen minutes. In the meantime, we're going to take each of the utilities and analyze the, the fund balance.
Yes.
Where we are in capital and how we're going to pay down the debt. I think that's important before we talk about how much money. And then look at the, and look at the overall picture for all, we have...
You mentioned the responsibility.
That's exactly what we're trying...
In fiscal responsibility, shouldn't we do that prior to taking a million and a half from the...
Oh, yeah, we're good. We're good. We're good that way.
No, that's okay now.
What I'm trying to say is, I think we need to take it a bit further now and look at the overall picture for all of the utilities and the current debt service and, and capital.
So if, if, if I'm understanding this conversation that we've been having now for, for the last forty-five minutes probably, because I, I was just asking about increasing our anticipated revenues based upon what it was last year.
That's true.
But we went to a tangent of other things. From what I'm hearing from the administration right now is that you're okay with a tax increase for our residents, and you condone it, number one. And number two is, you have no confidence that our revenues are going to increase, that in the event there was a shortfall on anything, I'm asking you to increase in revenues, it would compensate for it. Is that correct?
Well, I, I, I have confidence that we're having a successful year. I just don't have, I don't like to work like to the penny here. If anything happens, you're leaving no room for any kind of blip.
So in order to help our residents...
I am helping out. You want...
From fifty-eight dollars to fourteen dollars.
We're at fourteen dollars. You were last year at fifty-eight, eighty. We're trying, we've kept it to, so low. I mean, and, and we're trying to get good...
Like you said, you got to think about the big picture.
I am thinking about the big picture.
Is the, the tax bill a resident receives, not just municipal taxes?
Fourteen, it's, but I'm not responsible for that. We're not responsible. I'm sorry.
And you can't be my op...
We should be responsible enough to control it and make that...
We can only control the municipal. Everybody has to...
And let's lead by example and...
Oh, we are. Fourteen dollars. They're going up a hundred and twenty-three dollars a person. They should be the ones...
They don't follow any example.
You notice, we're, here's, here's the shame. I understand what you're saying with the bond rating, but at the same time, I think you've got to realize that we're making no harm to...
It's not harm. My, my...
Because I'll be honest with you, by and large, I mean, I think the budget's...
Well, we talked about it. We were good.
Yeah, the budget's excellent.
My point is, I want you to realize the big picture. We've been doing this a long time. We're trying to make the, the township really, in the long run...
But the whole thing, it seems like this to me all the time, which I don't like here, is that each year, doesn't matter who the councils, who the mayor's here, as long as you two are here, with your, obviously, your philosophy, right, in regards to how to stay fiscally healthy with the...
Correct.
That you always needed a little bit of increase. But I don't know how well that's going to go with the, yeah, I know.
The public...
Because what's going to happen if you don't just do it incrementally?
It's bigger than that.
Last, flat, okay, and then start to try to come down and put yourself into where you have to go to the public and say, hey, we, we actually have to go or have to lay off X amount of people. And I don't want to go into that because we don't have, for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, it's, it's not...
But let me ask you a question, though. But if your utilities, okay, like you said, you, you, you want to start paying down the debt on those utilities, right?
On the current...
Possibly used then to, to balance a budget. And I, I'm saying, this year I feel comfortable because of the eleven million dollars that it was, and, and we've already scored with the good work of the utilities, go after the, the rate change of, of going back up to two million dollars more because half, we absorbed all the towns that we, and it's healthy. So now we're saying, okay, this year is the year where the sewer says, okay, current, you took care of me when I was at a hundred thousand dollars in surplus, a million dollars made.
Twenty-eight thousand?
There's twenty-eight thousand sewer surplus.
All right, twenty-eight thousand dollars in sewer surplus. The current helped them. Now they're healthy, they're helping us to get to just next year. Again, council president, I, I ask, and, um, I mean, in deference to what was said at the finance committee, um, we can go in there, find money. Is there, is there, is there a number other than two twenty-six and zero that everybody can come to and be comfortable?
Do you feel comfortable with two twenty-six?
How do you want to do a roll call? You want to do a poll? How do you want to do...
I mean, it's either that or it's going to be go through each department. It just, if somebody has a recommendation for a cut, bring it up and make a recommendation.
Well, we got to go by department then, if that's, if that's the case.
No, I'm just saying. Okay, well, all right, well then.
Each person go. Who has a, who has a number?
I'm fine with the number you're at, the two twenty-six.
Mr. Pierre?
I'm fine with the number that you're at.
Mr. Paluso?
I'm not fine with the number. We didn't even talk about revenues and alternating source of income.
All right, so what number, we got to, you're looking for a number to get us down to? All right. I know we spent a lot of time together, and I thought we were very, very productive. And I'm glad that you gave the public a class, too, on certain things. Okay? I would just like, listen, there's things that we did in regards to each, obviously, department, where I think that, like, you know, on the police department, we realized that we saved a lot of money, and we, we got, obviously, trading with the weapon, different quality, not hurting the police department, they're getting what they want.
No, we know that.
I just think that if we go back and look at certain things, we could probably, like, landscape it around the building, if you're spending fifteen thousand, maybe we could bring it down to ten thousand.
It doesn't mean anything in your type.
Okay. If we could cut out that two twenty-five?
Brad, two twenty-six.
Fire and the library.
Yeah, it's, it's really less than, you know, it's fourteen dollars at this point. Really, the library and the fire district are, of the seventeen fifteen, is three dollars and fifteen cents. You see what I'm saying? So...
Of the two twenty-six, part of that is library and fire.
Okay, so how much of it is library and fire?
Well, I'll, I'll just...
So if you told, put it this way. So if you, if you told me two twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, two hundred thousand was for, obviously...
Well, the municipal. Um, can, well, the municipal is two twenty-six. Just the municipal.
Okay.
You know, the other ones, I'll have to go in and, yeah, I'll have to go in and just calculate the others.
Yeah, still.
How much?
It's time to do it to police and fire then.
I was doing it by, um, tax, how much it affects the residents. That's all I was doing. Do you know what I mean?
All right, you have two, two council people that are okay with two twenty-six, and then you have one councilman that's, that's zero. And we have two...
So what do we...
Can I also just ask one question?
I, okay.
Only again, because it's the same question. Again, in this budget, there's five officers. Is there six or is it five?
Yes, there is. It's because of the title. Um, you tell them what happened.
My other question is, there was one at step three, if I'm under...
I fixed it. It's gone.
It's right there.
Wipe it out.
Okay. But where's officer number six again?
It's, it's...
It's on the, you, you, um, Dave did it, what did Dave, what was the terminology? It was the, um, the guy was hired.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why...
So he's underneath. Okay.
Yes, that's right.
So it's, it's, he's hired already. I'm good. I'm good with that.
You're supposed to have a memory.
I have a memory, and it can, can talk.
That's why. And there's five new ones. So he is the sixth. Okay.
And you know what? Because, you know, when everybody's starting to turn the pages, when, when he said to me, oh, when you said six, I kept it at six, but he had the guy in.
Yeah.
And I said, oh my God. It's such an easy answer. But the other one, I did say, Brian, because I do listen to what he asked.
Because that's a savings of thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, absolutely. And I said, that you were, you said, I said to the police when we met with him, I said, look, I said, you had an opportunity to go to that. You didn't fill it, it's gone. You don't have that opportunity anymore. Yes.
My answer's going to be, knowing that we have five million dollars for the fund balance, which is almost opinionated because Ray gave a suggestion...
Well, he just made a...
Yeah, like he would be happy with six.
Okay, but we, I, I didn't speak to Ray about that.
I didn't.
Okay, just to be honest. Uh, a million dollars for insurance for catastrophic, I have no problem. And then the sewer, we're like nine million dollars. I just think that we could bring that down.
Okay, I'm going to tell you how serious we are at. We have to introduce this on the sixteenth. We have to, because we adopt on the fourteenth of July. I have to wait, um, twenty days. We're already into September.
Well, listen...
So I want to get this done. Let's make a decision.
But, so if, if there's people that are not happy, then they got to come up with some cut. We got to do it tonight.
We have to do it right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean... We have to get it done tonight.
Well, let me say that. Let me say this.
I hear one person at zero. I don't hear you at zero, and I don't hear you at zero.
Well, knowing that with the library and obviously with the, um, fire, I know we can't do anything about that. But if we could bring that number down to my zero, meaning you still have to pay for those other items, but if we could cut that out to two twenty-five...
Hey, let me ask you, here's a quick question for you. We just hired that new officer right from the academy. So now, how many are we down to that, out of this budget? It says six. Is, is he, now we're down to five or we're down to four?
We don't want to spend your money.
Well, we also have to see if he was the one that replaced the retiree. Remember?
Right. But no, what I'm trying to say is, I mean, I know it's minor, but if it'll help with some of the concerns here. He didn't need a psych, he didn't need all these other things because he was alternate route, he paid his own way.
That's why I was...
So, I mean, I'm just saying right there, that's, you know, we're working our way towards a thousand dollars saving right there. So if that'll help you out, it's down, we're down to two twenty-five.
You're still...
I think it's not a matter of where we cut right now because we, we, we've all digested, we've talked to all of you, we've, we've all really drilled down. As you said even at the, at the finance meeting, Ellen, why don't we just give you a number? And we thought we had a number at two twenty-six. Again, um...
And I'll be honest with you, the dialogue during the, we all learned a lot at the finance committee meetings. We did a lot of good things. And then, you know, there was things that came out tonight that some of us didn't know either. And we're educated, not only ourselves, but the public. So it's nothing personal. It's just, it's just a different ideology of what we want. Yeah.
You know, I have to add something to this, too, because I keep on hearing from the finance committee, the two individuals that serve on it. With all due respect to them, I know they spent time doing it, but I want to add to it that I spent a considerable amount of time going through the budget. Um, Ann and I spent an entire Saturday working together and talking. So, you know, it's, it's not arbitrary that you come up with numbers or recommendations. It's, it's homework and it's prudence that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and I take that very seriously. So I just want to add that to the comment.
Right.
That these, these two councilmen did a fine job, but I'm just saying that they're not the only ones that also put a lot of time into it.
Right. And Councilman Palusel, I would say this again, because you must have missed it. I've said it numerous times. Every single person, that's what I wanted to start out with, has been more than dedicated to trying to drill down and understand concepts and flows. And you in particular, we did spend, I know I was here till eleven o'clock on a Friday night, one time, talking to a man by the name of Rob about the whole thing, too. So this is, again, as you say, nothing personal. It's not personal.
No, it's not personal.
This is, we're so close to making a, a, a decision. I mean, again, um, do you, do we split the baby here and say a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Well, you, you said you can find two twenty-six. Where would you find it? Because if we were at nine ninety and you got us down to two twenty-six, where else can we go?
I'm saying, I mean, it's not like a rhetorical thing. We can say it the way we're talking about it. Yeah, you can find it, but what jeopardy does that put you in to find that number? It puts you in, it's like, it's, it becomes a compounding effect. Two twenty-six winds up to be four twenty. It's a million. I don't, I don't know what the ra, the ripples of that'll be.
That's, that was, that was a discussion when we first started a year ago, talking about...
And we started out at nine ninety?
Let's curb the insurance fees.
Yes.
We asked to curb a lot of overtime fees on the police department.
And we did. And we did.
But they're still evident. It's costing us. If we just eliminate the...
No, we just now fully, if you read the contract, you'll know that we're getting that full now value of a hundred thousand dollars. Because we talked about this. You know that overtime has gone this way. We showed that it was with taking, you know, one supervisor on vacation, not two. Um, so we've really, we've worked it not only through an agreement and a contract, but through, you know, working with the police and, um, you know, actually opening up the box and touching it, which you usually don't usually get to do.
Right. And we also, I, I specifically...
And that's together.
Made a recommendation on legal, since legal expenses were very high and they kept escalating, I asked if we can form a legal department, or at least investigate it and come back to us and tell us if there's any cost savings. I know Ann, where she comes from in Morris Town, they do have a legal department. It costs them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not the bill that we're seeing, you know, which is over, over a half a million dollars here.
Listen, yeah, it's different. But the fact of the matter is, this is a dollar sixteen a month, month you're stuck on. A dollar sixteen a month for, for residents. An average house assesses at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You want a zero, I mean, just let, let us know what the other council members want. A dollar sixteen. So, let me tell you this, though. And I will tell you this.
Sounds like that commercial.
You take services away, you take services away, because when you, if you're going to dig into departments, that's what you're going to do.
You're not taking services away. We're not asking you that.
At dollar sixteen, I, I got to tell you.
Mayor, we're not going to dig into departments. I just need a number. We'll work it out. But what I'm going to say is, we're going to dig into departments in two thousand and sixteen. Now, in October, November, when we sit here, we'll be...
It's going to be a little...
Ellen, with all due respect, you know, it's very difficult as a councilman not to see where the accountability is of a department or a quantifiable metric that can indicate is that department over their budget or under their budget. We're looking at a lot of arbitrary numbers because we're not dealing with them on a day-to-day basis. You know, so...
At the same time, too, we're here arguing with the professionals that are giving us their opinion, their numbers.
Yes.
And saying they're at the bottom line.
I think that Mr...
So we're arguing.
Let me, let me just say something, all right? Councilman Karifi pointed out the example with the police salaries. If you take out those six, okay? What happens next year? You have to budget extra because only half the salary is in there, okay? Well, that's, that applies to the other items in the budget, too. You take them out now, and something happens. You have to budget extra next year. You're penalized by taking them out now. The same example that applies to the police salaries applies to the rest of the current, the, the budget. You're going to have penalized next year if you take that money out now and you need it.
I'm glad you bring it up.
It's bottom line.
Because if you bring it up, I'm actually glad you did, because looking at the budget, when it was nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, the administration went back, and just one good example is the document scanning in our own township clerk department. We budgeted for thirty thousand last year. It wasn't utilized. So they came back with the budget now cut in half of a fifteen thousand dollars. But after talking with the township clerk today, we don't even need the fifteen thousand because we have the thirty thousand budget from the prior year. So we can save in that department alone. So if that's happening in one department, how many other departments are there where there could be a similar circumstance?
Thank you for pointing it out, but I just, in all due respect, it would, it could have been pointed out a little nicer. And I'm sorry, I, I, if you don't think, we looked at everything, and we have conversations with our department head. That's not something we said, oh, let's save this as a, as something hidden. My God, do you know how many moving parts there are?
Of course. And that's why I looked at all the moving parts.
And we looked at them all, too.
Right.
Again and again. We live it. So, um, again, all I can say is, I think we're there at two twenty-six. Um, but can the other two councilmen weigh in and give me, give me a number?
Well, my, my thing is, is if, if there's councilmen that are not happy with the numbers, then give us, you know, particulars in the budget areas where you think that we can make more cuts.
And I think, I think, I think the question was answered. Question was answered that they don't want to make more cuts. So now, and I don't, don't take this as not personally.
Well, no, no, who doesn't want to make more cuts?
Uh, I, I don't think...
I know, I know you don't want to make more cuts. I'm just saying...
But she doesn't want to make the cuts because of what could happen next year. She, but she says she won't make them.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
But the fact is, she's just warning you that if those are made...
No, and I, I'm hearing what you're saying.
I'm trying to say...
No, I'm hearing what you're saying.
At the sake of trust. Yeah. All right.
Let me just ask you one thing. Just, I know when you budgeted last year, if we didn't collectively, as a council, right, and you, because you had to work hard at it, and we really truly had a mess last year that was handed to us.
No doubt.
And let's just face it, because we sat up here, if the public was here, we went through some real cultural shock dealing with another CFO. And that's not your fault either, mayor. Okay? But let's just face it, we had almost a million dollars in overtime on the police department, and we had a budget for that. So that money had to come out somewhere to find the money for that. Okay? And you guys did a great job doing that, and we made some significant changes to hopefully...
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
The way things are being...
Yeah, we did. We, so we all worked with, so we all, as much as we're fighting over this two hundred and twenty-five thousand, we've done a lot good together.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, I think on the police budget for overtime, what's it, about four hundred thousand now?
Yeah.
So we all worked together. So I just want to let you know, at the end of the day, I think we're all being very, we were all very positive with this budget, and we did a lot of good things for it.
Absolutely.
So if we're, if we're, if we're going to be disappointed over...
Two people at two twenty-six, one person at zero. I look to the...
Yeah. I just don't want to leave here, and I know, I know you mean well also. I just don't want to leave here. We did a lot of good.
Yeah.
Okay? And this is not a campaign season for anybody, but we did do a lot of good. And, and we did have to obviously do this under a lot of strenuous times. Okay? And we met back and forth, and I love when you two debate each other, so I get, that's more comical to me, right?
Yeah, because we get the best answer.
So if this, at the end of the day, if we could work this out, I, I think it'll be good for everybody.
Working at a number, two twenty-six to one hundred thirteen.
A two hundred, I mean...
So if it's, if it's ten thousand dollars, what's it about a, a fifty cent raise?
I'm going to two twenty-five, yeah, but I don't vote.
Right now, it's a dollar twelve. Right now, it's a dollar twelve a month.
I mean, yeah, I mean, come on.
So you want to go, what, sixty-five cents? I mean, you don't, please help.
I, I know that you...
Certainly not taking in a cavalier way. I care about people. Yeah, no, no. I ju, I just left my mother in a nursing home at ninety-three, and a man came into the room and he said, can I stand here? And that man just needed to stand there because he was getting, having a hard time. So before I left, I hugged this man. So I mean, Rob, if anybody, I'm sorry, I'm going to get emotional, but I do care about people, and I, but I also people, and I, but I also have to care about...
Not doubting that. We both share the same passion. That's why I'm so passionate about this, because I hug a lot of people that are going to foreclosure, or people that can't pay their bills and losing their resources.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. I wanna finish...
If they go to foreclosure, is a dollar system gonna make a difference for them? No, it's not.
Nope.
I wanna just finish the thought. We, we, this is something that it's also about the future, and the thing is to invest in this so that we are in a good shape as we move forward. It's a continuous, as I say, it's a fluid document that goes into '16 and '17. And because we're so close, not only with the number, but with the fact that we're gonna be seeing each other on a more regular basis in October and November and getting it done in a couple of months, we'll maybe take the summer off a little bit. I'm saying, yes, you made a commitment, and you can also say to the people that you said zero to, wow, well, I worked together with all my, I don't wanna say the, what's the, my peers, I'll have to say peers, because I don't wanna say that, because I didn't mean that, Rob. And you say, they didn't get quite to zero, and zero really isn't the number because of a downward trend, and also the fact that we have the six districts, fire districts, and we have the library. That being said, man, we went from $58 to...
Zero.
No, that was not funny. I know, no.
You know, Ellen, we're...
I mean, we're talking about 14...
We started talking about revenue enhancement opportunities, and we talked about increasing the revenue that's anticipated. That's where this conversation started. I'd like to just get back on track on that and talk about some areas where I want some feedback, and maybe there is some possibilities, maybe there's something we didn't realize. Like, one of them is, you know, is there, is there any opportunity where if we did decide to increase the anticipated revenues, and your concern is that we don't have a surplus or we're falling short, but is there an area to compensate for that in the following months? Like, for instance, in our clerk's office alone?
And remember, you already went in there and cut some of them down, reduced them, and didn't...
But I did, and I did increase...
Tell them what, why don't you cover someone once that you didn't?
So, I want to offer some suggestions and see what your thoughts are, you know, revenue enhancement ideas. You know, it's, it would behoove me to say, okay, this is what I want, without giving you rationale behind it, and having a nice informal dialogue. Yeah, if this was a retreat, it would be much easier to talk, but, you know, we're up here, you're down there, but we're all working together, we're all trying to help the taxpayer. So, what I'm saying is that there's some unrealized revenue that we could possibly have.
Okay, council president, wanna start on the revenue side?
Well, I know, but these aren't gonna really come into effect this year, but things that we had talked about, with the ambulances, the golf course...
The revenues he's talking about is, when you do a budget, whatever you collected, that's what you know.
No, I know, I know what he's talking about, but I'm talking about future revenues, with the ambulances, with the golf course, the driver, you know, the driver.
Yeah, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna go, that part...
That won't be until next year.
Yeah, and also, right, that part is true, and then also, that's what's also in here. We're building on something, we're not building on sand, we're building on a solid foundation and a very, very conservative, reasonable number from nine to six to two. Now, with regard to the hotel, as you can see, the numbers are not boding in the right direction. We know that because Ann did her homework before she came here, and good old Terry, our tax collector, just gave us the report, so we know that's a real number. So, what's your other revenue place where you think we can move?
So, we talked about the hotel tax revenue that we could realize another $60,000. We talked about the ambulances where we could realize another $40,000. We talked about the community center revenues, since if we're collecting rents and they're consistent from last year on their contracts, then, you know, it's another $30 million. Just three basic ones. So, what I'm saying is, if the concern is that there's a shortfall possibly, there could be an emergency appropriation if it's a smart decision to make on something that's truly an emergency. If we didn't have...
Knowing about what and having, caring, dedicated people that I, every person who came to the budget hearing, every department head, and that's why I wanted them to start out with a good story and tell you some things, which I think was a very positive on both sides, it was a great opportunity. But the thing is, we sat down and we said, look, years ago, people used to come to the administrator and the finance officer and the mayor and they'd say, "Okay, I'm putting in 40, but I only need 20." These guys didn't do that. These guys and gals didn't do that, because they know, we've been around long enough to say, "Tell us what you need, what are the resources you need, what do you really need? Is there something that you can tweak a little bit?" Yeah, we tweaked the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, just, we weren't at $990,000 when we first, you know, we cut stuff before that. Then, then we cut again on the current side. So, we've really honed down on that. And in deference to Councilwoman Valori, I would just say, yes, there's some money in there we can tweak, but I really don't think, in a comfortable way, I mean, I can get any, I don't wanna go lower than six, I'm willing to go to 226, but I'm willing to, to work with my finance director and my department heads and my mayor and go back in, you know, on Monday and say, "Look, it, we have to find another $100,000, but please, I can't, I don't think I can find 226."
I mean, I'm looking at the police department, for example. I know there was an issue with, we were gonna update the computer system there, right? And I see here that we budgeted $95,000, but we never did update that system last year. So, there was, there was money that wasn't used for that system.
If it wasn't in Congress, it's gone. It's gone to surplus.
Yeah, and that's...
Surplus, yeah.
Fun balance.
That's, yeah, I know, fun balance. So, is, you know, we're already halfway, is he gonna be purchasing this equipment or, you know, I'm just looking at where...
Well, here's one, here's one issue, and you make a good point, Councilman. I think some departments don't wanna do nothing until the budget is approved.
That's exactly right.
And they're like, rock, we're doing a rock and a hard place, do I spend it, do we hire? Because that's, you know...
I won't, you know, obviously, wouldn't approve anything that's in here that's new until we can spend, you know what I mean, until the budget's passed.
And, and looking at, picking up on his conversation, Councilman Valori mentioned some items, is there anything in the general fund that should be really in capital improvement, such as roadway improvement or construction or something, that we can shift over?
We did some of that already.
You did?
Yeah, that's a good question. We did do that, we pulled out the vehicles.
We really pulled out the vehicles.
Yeah.
Because I saw initially that we could've done that, and I didn't wanna make those recommendations until you got me the final budget yesterday, but, you know, I gotta say, you know, I only got it last night, so, you know, I'm trying to figure out what you did cut and what you did.
You got that much change to get to what you've been getting over the past year.
Well, we've been talking a long time, I, but we did do that, yes. And we also talked about leasing...
So, there's nothing else that you see in the general fund that could be transferred over to capital?
No.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, I respect your opinion, thank you.
Yeah, no, we...
Yeah, that's a good question. Plus, we're leasing.
Like, for example, like the police department, again, building maintenance, you have $101,000 budget for that.
Oh, that's because, yeah.
Yeah, we cut that, cut that, they...
Yeah, look at the new pages.
Some of it, we did put into capital, we said, we'll say it's part of...
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
What was it cut to? What section is that, Mr. Valori?
Under police, OEM and court.
What division number?
Building maintenance. One of two.
Off the top, all I know is, we definitely cut it, and we cut it significantly because they have a roof, they have a roof problem, because I said, white...
They've always had a roof problem.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah. Well, they, now they have a worse roof problem because they didn't address it.
Yeah.
What line item number was that?
It's line item, um, 263.
263?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 231.
He's got it, he's got it.
231. It's showing proposed $101,000, 067.
Yeah, we did cut that, and there was, I believe, fencing, roofing, and, yeah, we definitely brought that one down. I think they had 130...
With all due respect, I'm sorry, as of yesterday's budget, I see that line item still at 101, 067.
Oh, but we cut it before that, before we even got to...
It was printed.
Yeah, but before April, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I'm looking at the June 10th, the June 10th that you printed out, I'm saying, I'm looking at that one. It still shows 101.
No, what I'm saying is that we cut it before it even got to you.
Oh, you cut it before the 101?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's still 101?
Yes.
So, Councilman Valori, it's still $101,000, 067, then?
Okay.
Yes.
But that was cut prior to the April 1 distributed, okay?
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you. And talking about the police department as well, is the recommended positions that we wanna fill, is there a cost benefit savings if we fill those positions later on in December? Savings in uniforms, guns, salary? It's the timing of the hire is what I'm asking about. Is there any additional savings we could realize in that?
Well, obviously, like we talked about before, there would be a savings because we wouldn't hire them till later in the year, not when it comes to, you know, uniforms and all that, we still have to pay that.
January, December, you're still paying for the uniform.
Plus, don't forget we have the body armor grant, we get all that from there. Like I repeat, it's the following year I get concerned about, and the cap...
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you just mentioned the body armor grant, and some that we both talked about, and I've always given you accolades, both of you, for, you know, grants that we have. And I know it's a lot of work finding the grants and planning and managing them and just submitting the application, but I did make a recommendation last year during the budgetary process, I asked if we can hire a grant writer to find the funding to aid our programs. Has there been any work done on that?
Yes, as you know, Julie, in the purchasing department is someone that, we had a grant writer in Gabe, and then Julie, who worked closely with him and worked with purchasing, she's, she's doing a great job in that, so we added, we just added more to her plate and maybe gave her a slight change when we did that whole office over.
And she has the capacity and the resources to do the job?
Yes, yes, she's very good. And Gabe, yeah, Gabe was here, and then, I know Ann does, I know I pride myself over the years, I've become someone that, like, example, you know, I just was saying how I went for the grant for the, you know, the historical, I went, I go for the open space grant, I mean, I've, I've done a lot of grant getting, so I work with department heads in particular if I need them to help me pursue something. So, I don't think that would be something at this point that we'd need to spend it on, because we are coming up with grants and pursuing them, to be honest with you. And there's one thing I did say, before I left Mendham, there was something, and it doesn't cost a lot of money, there's a system where it does show you all the grants and for a very small amount of money. I'm gonna pursue that information again and just get online with that, and you don't miss anything. All you have to key in is body armor, a tank, you know, how do you get better shoes for your DPW guys? I mean, they have grants on everything, I just made that up, but, you know, whatever. Brian, were you gonna say something?
I'm gonna do additional homework on that, too, because I think there's, there's more money that we can realize. I know the federal government just released $685 million into the state of New Jersey, so there's grant money that we can secure out there. But that's, that's down the road for the next year's budget. But that's what I was talking about, is talking about revenue ideas and resources, and I'm just answering, Ellen, your question that you had in the very beginning of our budget process, they won, is you said, "Offer that, let's talk about that." So, now that we've gathered our thoughts, we talked about the budget, analyzed things, had deep conversations, I wanted to bring that up, and that's how I started this whole evening, is to bring up these ideas.
You know, and with anything, I mean...
As with anything, I mean, this is, this is our first dance at the budget together, 100% on our, on our watch, so, and the dance has been fine, it's been, you know, so, just, you know, just give us some direction.
I'm just gonna, I just wanna throw a number out there to see if, what people think, if, I know at $14, it comes out to $1.16 or whatever, $14 a month, what would the, what does that 226 need to go down to, to get down to the dollar a month? I'm just throwing that out there to see if that's gonna satisfy some, you know, so it would be $12, what is that number gonna go down to? I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know if that's gonna satisfy what...
One of the library, we don't, can't do anything about it. We can't control the library and whatever.
No, you can do it.
I'm just throwing that out there to say that, you know, if you, we can tell residents that your taxes are going up less than a dollar a month for the year.
They're going down to 99.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, it's, you know, what is that number? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, so people have a target to go for, if that's what it's gonna be.
I got the number 225, 500.
All right, so we, I'll slice 500 out of this thing, and we're outta here, we're done.
Like to cut 500 from the mayor's salary?
That's right, Mayor, you didn't give up your 2% like I said.
That's it, that gets us down to...
Okay, we're good.
223 and a half.
But this is, this equals, this equals this.
Just throwing that number out there, just so people have a target number.
How do you get this?
Because I added up.
Hey, Ellen, what did...
No, not how do you get it, how do you pay for it?
What was the increase for the PAL? You mentioned the PAL.
That's gonna be for next year.
I just wanted to make sure I understood when Ann was telling you that it's $14 because we have to raise separately, because it's a fire district and...
$3, yeah.
$3, right.
Right. That, there's nothing we can do about, but I'm just, I'm just, this way, you know, maybe that's a target number to people to live with, if you say it's 99 cents a month.
Okay.
I'll get $20,000 or something.
$180 something.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's, what is that, $180s?
$180 something, so about $44,000 in that range.
What's that?
Because you're cutting 7% to, two divided into four...
Again, you have to look at something higher than 99, and now we're down to 180.
It would have to go down to about $44,000.
So, how much would we have to decrease by?
About 44.
44.
You're saying 186?
18, what will get you down to 180?
180.
182?
182.
182, is that what it is, 182?
It's in the range of give or take a few.
To get, to get, to get to the other side, if you want, will be 180.
I'll give you a tax consequence of what?
181 will be 99 cents a month.
181.
Taxes go up, 99 cents.
$12 we're looking at. We're looking at $12 a month, plus you're looking at your...
$12 a month.
$12 a year, a year.
$12 a year.
But when you look at the overall tax consequence, it's at, what, 2.755 right now? What is that for the average, home of 350?
No, it's $12 based on 350. It'd be $1 per month based on...
I told you what it is, it was just...
Are you counting tax schools?
Everything.
Oh, well, yeah, but we can't control schools.
Right, we can't control schools.
School is what, school is what most of your taxes are. Well, let me ask you this, can, if they go down to 181, which brings it under, under a dollar a month, it's under a dollar a month increase. Or we, or...
I'm good at 226, but if it gets this, to go forward, I'm good with the 181.
Well, I just wanted to throw that one out there, so, you could say, I mean, if, you know, just to your point, is gonna look to increase some of those things.
And we're also using a sewer surplus of $150,000. A million, a million five.
That's already in there, yeah.
Million five.
Well, so, let's, you know, is people happy with that? Well, obviously, the people that were happy with 226 were happy with that. Does that, what does that do for you guys?
Ask Councilman Valori.
Mayor, you're happy with a tax increase?
With one.
Are you happy with the tax increase, if that's the case?
First and foremost, it is a tax increase. Fact of the matter is, it keeps the services going, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with the 99 cents, I'm fine with being safe for next year, I'm fine with all that, yes.
Ellen, I have a question for you.
Thank you.
Don't laugh at me. What if we just take 1.5 million and 50,000 on the surplus?
No, 44.
No, I'm saying the surplus, we're taking 1.5, now take $1,550,000, that'll get it down to 99 cents a month, and we're done. It keeps you from having to go through the books and pay for $50,000, too.
Well, listen, you, I mean, you said if we gave you a number, so if we went with that number, you guys come back to us, right, right? Oh, yeah, well, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, however you guys do it, you do it, and if it gets done, is that, that's what I'm saying now, is, what do you guys say? If they figure it out and get it down to that?
I'm okay with the 226, I'm okay with the 180.
What's that? Well, no, no, I, believe me, I know.
I'm saying, I'm done.
Right.
1, 99 cents a month.
That, well, right.
You can make town coupons now.
Are we, are we okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Well, I know, I wasn't asking you guys. I know you're okay, I know where you, I know where you're, where you're at, I know.
Like I said, I wasn't against the 226, but if that's okay, I'm fine with that, too.
99 cents, a dollar, 99 cents.
99 cents, boy, you know Mike's good, he was good with the other one.
He was from 68.
Council president?
What do you guys?
We're for the vice president. Somebody write back to her.
What do you...
Well, you know, we made an attempt to decrease the budget significantly, and, and I think our efforts on council, working with the administration, has come off of $990,000. So, if we can bring it to a dollar per month, it...
99 cents.
99 cents.
99 cents, okay? So, if it's 99 cents per month, not happy with the overall tax consequence of the big picture, like you had said before, including the school tax, including county open space, library and everything else, you know, I just hope the residents can, can survive on this, this economy. So, if, if that's the case, then, you know, I'll go along with it.
We'd just like to know, too, when it was the nine nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand when we first started, that was what per month? I think you said sixty-nine dollars or something like that?
Yeah, you had to break down.
So sixty, so sixty-nine dollars, so, a year.
Yeah.
Sixty-nine dollars for the year. Now it's going down to just under twelve.
Eleven eighty.
Eleven eighty-something, so.
That's a good number.
You know, I mean.
Because when it's eleven eighty-eight, it's a real number.
I think that's true.
Right, so, I mean, that is a major, I mean, we, we brought it down significantly, down to, you know, ninety-nine cents a month.
It's not even a strong enough word, President.
Right.
You guys did, you know, that's a significant, that's a, that's a lot.
And, and make it noted that, that's without affecting a single service to the residents of the town.
And also looking and investing in the future for investments that we're gonna have.
Right, and I.
Well, you know, to go along with it is, is, you know, we're investing in our employees. I want to make sure our employee base is happy. I want to make sure that we preserve the quality of our services, absolutely, but I also want to ensure people can reside in their homes so that they can pay their bills. It's a balance, you know, we, we have to really find a balance here between the taxpayers and the municipality. And, you know, by, by agreeing to that, I would say, you know, my expectations for the next budgetary process starting in October is, I'll repeat it again, my expectation is zero.
Well, and I, I think that, you have to remember, too, is now, we're also gonna have some of these new things that we're funding this year, you know, that are gonna create revenues for the town. So that, I think, will be a big help for us going, you know, for next year.
We did invest, and, and we did some new investing in the monies. We tripled, not that it's a lot, but it is significant when you're talking about the kind of money to, to earn almost a half a point versus point zero, we're, we are earning point four-five, so I think we'll see some increase in that.
Pick up that ninety-nine cents, we just.
But it is, it makes it.
No, you're right.
But we still, I still want to hear from Ray about what his concerns are about the fund balance.
We'll do that.
I want more information concerning that.
Ray should be at the meeting for the introduction on the sixteenth.
Yeah, he should. No, I'll be talking to him before that. I'll be calling him.
No, no, you have to talk to him Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he's on fishing things.
So.
Right.
We're good?
Yeah, just wanted to move on to, Ellen, just for the record, real quick, where do you see us doing well, moving forward with our, our utilities? Where do you see us, you see us doing real well with the sewer, the golf? Do you see the fog?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and. It's exciting, the folks, yeah, no. Yeah, you could speak to the folks, I mean, it's just.
Okay.
You know, it's, we, we, you're blessed, we're blessed, there's a lot of rules here that are now we're gonna sign off and make it happen.
That's what I was hoping this year, that's why I looked for zero. I heard such great things happening.
At this, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to take a five-minute break.
Make a motion.
So a motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Take a five-minute.
Make a motion, reconvenant to open session.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
Yes. If you come up, please state your name, sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
You do, but you'll be the only one here in two hours.
All right, come on now. Roy, that's for ten drum and drive. Okay, first question. I've been asking for this for a couple of months once I found out about it, so I'll start with the easy one. Could we see the list of the merit raises? Do you guys know what the merit raises are?
Yes.
We have a list, yeah, I've overseen.
Yeah, we have.
Well, when does the public get it?
Alan, when would the, oh, okay. Do you have any other question?
Can you give me the total dollar amount of merit raises? Not broken down by person yet?
What's it, when will the public get a list of the merit, people get merit raises and the amounts?
Right, we can, we can, or Monday, I can get it to you Monday.
Okay. Can you tell me tonight what the dollar amount is? Not broken down by employee, but the total?
Total?
Yeah, is it ten thousand, twenty thousand?
I could tell you, I think. Oh, yeah. Well, is it okay to give that number?
Yeah, yeah, I have to be very cautious, I'm gonna have to give you titles or categories, but.
You know, when it's not totaled up.
Tonight, I just want the dollar amount, and I do want to see the breakdown.
Yeah, you can see.
He's gonna give you a rough estimate, it's not totaled up for us, but.
All right.
And if it's what, I mean, it's in.
Yeah, I know it's in the budget, but the way this.
It should be easier.
Okay, next question. Two thousand and fifteen expense increase on everything. What, what was that dollar amount?
On that, remember that some of that, the number, some of it's in water and some of it's in sewer.
What's that?
The number that is there.
The merit raises? It's sixty-four thousand, right?
But that's total.
Total.
That includes water and sewer.
Everything, yeah, sixty-four.
But again, there is separate vision.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, okay, I'm not getting. Okay, my next question, the two thousand and fifteen, if we went line item by item, but you obviously have a total, what's our total expense increase, two thousand and fifteen? You know, it's.
Roy, you may run out of time, you may just want to ask all your questions and then let them answer.
Okay, well, you're writing these down, somebody?
Yeah.
Okay. You all know my position, especially now that I even found out there's another two hundred thousand from water surplus, water surplus. You know, we hear this every year about water, we could have very, we haven't yet until last week, a wet summer, and we don't use water, but we're taking two hundred thousand dollars out. So my next question is, with the two hundred thousand dollars out, what's our water surplus? We got the number tonight with sewer was nine million, what's the water?
Five point, over five million.
Wow. Well, look, I'm probably gonna run, how much time do I get tonight? Three minutes?
Two thirteen.
Five.
I get five, all right, I mean.
Next time, say yes.
You know, the, what really should happen here, ladies and gentlemen, there should be a substantial decrease in our water and our sewer charges, because these, these surpluses are ridiculous and co-mingling this money with the general fund, even though, like I said two weeks ago, might be legal, but it ain't right. Next one, and this, everybody's gonna have to put their thinking caps on here, but you've got the paperwork in front of you, Division one twelve, the health, for two thousand and fifteen, let me just round it off, you're budgeting six point nine million. I was happy to see the decrease of seven, from seven point four from last year, because you know the little polemic conversation I had with Jasmine last year about this number, because we've been self-insured since January first, two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and fourteen, we encumbered three point two million, so three point two after the budget number of seven point four, roughly four million dollars. That's a big chunk of change, and like I said on this, too, back in March, I realize it's encumbered, not all the bills came in from doctors and hospitals, but I'll be so generous here, I'll say a million dollars. I mean, that's one-third, there's no way it could be one-third, I don't think, of the, of the, of the original three point two. So we're, we've got three million dollars just for one year somewhere. And I'm not getting, I'm jumping around, all of you up there have a misconception of what an auditor does. Mike DePiero doesn't, because we've had this conversation in public, auditor just comes in and attests to the financial numbers, that they're reasonable. He's not your business administrator, he's not your mayor, he's not your financial planner. We should be getting these numbers from in-house or quote-unquote some other experts, not relying on whatever this new guy's name is. He might be able to give you some information whether the towns do.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. But, you know, it's, more thought, I don't know what word to use. Next thing, what is the raise in this budget for everybody across the board? What's the, I didn't, because we didn't get the budget, Mike, I mean, this is, you know what I mean. What, two percent?
No.
Two percent.
No, 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 you mean, no, no, you're talking total of the whole budget?
No, no, across the board, the percentage. Is it two percent?
For salaries?
Yeah.
Salaries, or are you talking the total budget, the increase in the total?
No, no, salaries, I just.
Oh, salaries, yeah.
Two percent.
Two percent, okay. What's been the county average this year, Ellen? Yeah, you know, different towns in the county.
Oh, well, the part is, they are, they have on, other than police, they have, which are, oh, sorry.
Other than police are, the towns have had a lesser number because of, excuse me, the arbitration factor, but basically, they are starting to come up a little bit, but they're not, they're anywhere between one and a half, one, one and a half to two percent, not the county itself, though, the county you know is.
Yeah, I'm saying across, cross section of the townships.
Yes.
Last thing before, Ann and I spoke at break time, and this has to be done, ladies and gentlemen, you have to set, we're not with self-insured, you gotta set up an insurance trust fund ASAP. I am shocked that the state of New Jersey's insurance commissioner doesn't have laws set up like that for towns that are self-insured, because you do have to have some type of reserve for catastrophic year, and also if you do get out of self-insurance and you go into a state plan or something, but I, I gotta tell you something, four years, we've had two to three years of excellent claim losses, we should be, we should be a lot of dollars sitting around somewhere. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. We've got a lot of money somewhere.
Time, time's up.
Where it's been used somewhere else.
Right, time's up.
Time's up.
Okay. Do you have the answers to those questions?
I have some answers. Can I, do you want to sign in, Roy? And you want me to answer some of these? I'll just go to the insurance only because I spoke to the state, and what happened is you have to do an ordinance for a commission, which we're going to be doing on the next meeting, not this one, the following one in July, we do an ordinance, and then we do a dedication by rider, and we'll have our own fund there. It just, they had to give us some guidance and there was none, so that's the good news. There is money put aside, and how they did it for many years was just roll the reserve, okay? And it's about two million dollars. So that'll go into, instead of just rolling, that money will go into that dedication by rider for a rainy day, okay? So that's the good news about that, and that's one of the audit comments, I believe. What's the other one? Let's see. I have two million. Said the overall expense increase.
Any questions?
Well, for the whole budget, including the utilities or, should I, this is the overall, it's one point three million. Yeah.
Does that give to them?
It's about two percent.
Basically, how many with the two surpluses?
No, that's increased revenues and some of the, yeah, some of the surplus, yeah. But that's the overall increase, if you go line by line, yeah. You'll have that in the, it's in that package, it'll be there.
This council, your time, yeah.
Jonathan Nelson, Patriots Road, Mars Plains. Ellen, I'm just gonna read a short statement, just tell me if you agree with this statement, please. The township's strong financial standing is a result of a four point eight increase in revenues, a tax collection rate of ninety-nine point two percent, maintenance of a healthy surplus for the township's water and sewer utilities, increased employee contributions towards benefits in addition to the implementation of energy-saving efforts that have saved the township thousands of dollars. These are just a few of the examples of how the township has been able to save taxpayer dollars during these economic challenges we continue to face. Although appropriations have been stabilized by savings, some increases include emergencies for Superstorm Sandy, retirement payout, debt service, police pension, and disposable yard waste, which has nearly doubled. Would you agree with that statement? Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't need to.
Yeah, I did start off.
No, I got up.
Do I get a do-over?
Wait a minute, can you say, can you repeat it?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to get you this, being kind. Look at that guy.
Go ahead, repeat it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You do speed up.
Okay, the township's strong financial standing is a result of a four point eight percent increase in revenues, a tax and collection rate of ninety-nine point two percent, maintenance of a healthy surplus for the township's water and sewer utilities, increased employee contributions towards benefits in addition to the implementation of energy-saving efforts that have saved the township thousands of dollars. These are just a few examples of how the township has been able to save taxpayer dollars during these economic challenges we continue to face. Although appropriations have been stabilized by savings, some increases include emergencies for Superstorm Sandy, retirement payout, debt service, police pension, and disposable yard waste, which has nearly doubled.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Right. That was, that was a two thousand?
Tax increase, but we had a healthy COLA increase.
Happy, I, I knew.
COLA, cost of living, and that's why we can go to the zero percent.
Okay.
And I stated that in two thousand and thirteen.
That was, you're right, that was the two thousand and thirteen Mayor Barbario statement introducing a zero percent tax budget. There was no taxes raised that year, and, and that year.
Have that COLA, you don't have.
And I'm just, and that year, and that year, we used five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the sewer surplus, it was five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, I never said a word during any of the budget hearings, and I'm not gonna say anything about using the one point seven million combined between the water surplus and sewer surplus, but that one point seven million dollars, without it, taxes would be going up nearly two million dollars this year. So I don't disagree with this budget, I haven't seen it, other than just curiously, curiosity, curiosity glances at the budget meetings, but we said this two years ago, that zero percent budget increases are not healthy for the township, and last year and this year, this is the result of what's gonna happen. Now, we do have a new business administrator and new CFO, is Ellen gonna be, sit here and say that this is gonna be her policy going forward, as long as she's business administrator, that she anticipates small incremental tax increases instead of the odd-year zero percent budget increase? I think that's a very fair question, and I think that's why we're going through this whole rigmarole the whole evening, because once you give in a zero percent tax increase, people expect that every year.
Right, right. And I agree.
So next year, you know, one oh one?
No.
Good point, Jonathan.
Right, in all, in all due respect, you know, in, in my Danville years and in my Mendenham years, I worked very closely with the finance director, as you know, I'm a certified municipal finance officer. It's a balance and it's, there are, my, my, I'm sorry, my brachiology is always so many moving parts, it's such a balancing act, and it's such a, I don't know, you know, how bad gasoline will be, something happens with electric, something happens with, like, the super storm, I, I thought for a minute it sounded like something I had said in one of my Mendenham budgets, because we had a sewer utility as well as a water. So I just say this, it is recognized, as, as Ann has said, by Moody's and S and P, that they do not like, you know, flat, flat, little, little up, and then, then because you have to make up for it, it spikes, because you, you know, in your own budgets, in your own checkbook, how many things have gone down? I think it's, it's fiscally prudent, and it's, and it's fair, and we do care about our residents and our public, but we are only at the max, twenty cents on the dollar, the rest is by others, and I say, yes, it's nice to, it's good to do that because you build the surplus. Now, if in fact, there are some things, because I, I don't want to have it to go, I, I want it, next year, which will be starting in October and November, I want to make sure, and Ann and I are on board with this, as well as the mayor, and that is that we want to take a look to utilize that surplus in, in some of those things, to start paying back the debt service, because I don't want to turn over to the next finance people or the next administrator a condition where, yeah, it's great, but you didn't, you know, you didn't take care, and then you have, then you go back to having a problem in, in your sewer utility. One of the things that's something Ann and I have not yet gotten to do is, in these, over the last couple of, good couple of years, there's fund, there's funds that are fully funded in sewer, in water, in, in golf, in, in a current, where, when we introduce some of the ordinances for the capital improvements, as we said to you in the budget, we said this to, to you at, and if you heard it, and Ann and I will say that we're hoping that instead of having to fund it through bonds and notes, that we're gonna find funding prior to introducing these things, to say, oh, we found a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the golf, what do they call it, the thing, the, we.
Golf range?
Golf range, the golf range, instead of paying, you know, bonding for it, that that's how we're gonna do it. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a pincer movement on this funding. There's money there, yes, it's a great surplus, and we're gonna bring, bring down our debt and take a look at that, as well as you, taking a look at what's already in there that's fully funded, that the project has already been completed, and spend that going forward, fully funding our proj, I'm sorry, I'm gonna beep and I know I'm done.
Twenty minutes is up.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but yes, I, I, the short answer is, yes, it's good to be like that, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ellen.
Now, Esther.
Yeah, I think my time is up, too.
Very well said.
All right. Thank you for that, that's very human. I heard Paul give the beep.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. At Patacha 182 Hawkins Avenue. Just got a couple of little things here. Not happy, but not everybody can be. You know, I understand about using a sewer surplus money and everything, because you don't want to raise our taxes. I do understand that. But, you know, again, I am not so naive to know that if you didn't do that, our taxes would go wildly up. However, you are using our tax dollars. They were already taxed, so you are using our tax dollars. The big thing is, yes, when we had that 0% budget, that was the first thing I wrote. We're going to be seeing this for the next three years, because that created a big problem, but nobody wanted to listen. Seems that we can use the sewer and water surplus anytime we can't meet a budget, all right? But that doesn't help the taxpayers out there that are being charged excessively, in my opinion now, that we have so much out there. So yes, please look into decreasing the water and the sewer. I mean, that's a definite. That's ridiculous. I didn't see it when I looked. I know there was a discussion about ordering five new SUVs for the police department. Is that still being done in this budget? Why don't I see it? What is it under?
It's in capital.
Capital, thank you. How come there's a spot for vehicle equipment on the police force? Is that something different, under the police?
When you have, like, vehicle equipment, that could be the lights...
Okay.
Emergency equipment that's put into the vehicle.
So why are the cars... They're in capital?
The vehicle.
The vehicle.
The vehicle itself. But then, you have to equip the vehicle, lights, sirens.
No, no, I'm saying, all right, we're paying for those SUVs. Where is that coming out of? The police budget?
Capital.
Capital.
How come out of capital, rather than the police budget? I don't understand.
It's in the police budget. It's under capital for the police.
For the police, thank you. Thank you.
It's capital, it's still in the section.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Also, one of the things I had asked you to look into during the budget meeting was the $600,000 that they asked you to... Okay, $400,000 of it was going to be taxpayers' responsibility. They received a $200,000 grant from the state in order to resurface North Beverwood Road. I asked you to check into that, seeing that the Bank of America just purchased a property over there, and we've never had flooding problems or anything over there in regards to that area. And now all this work is being done. We have much more problems over there in that area, just trying to get the hell out of our blocks. Okay? This was a total waste of time, having this done, but make sure that this in no way is related to Bank of America. If it is, they should be footing the bill. And to me, that is due diligence. You should be looking into that. As far as Mr. Iglesias' bills and what he's budgeted for, this man, I don't know how you want to let this man run amok. Have you checked into past history? When Mimi Letz was here, when Luther was here, what were we being charged? What was going on? I mean, so many of these are lawsuits, I know that, but the amount of money it's going to taxpayers here is ridiculous. I mean, Mars County in itself, okay? What do we have, the most expensive attorney in New Jersey? I think people are getting a little upset here, and we need to look at this, and we need to come to some kind of...
30 seconds.
Something has to be done. I personally would like to see him go. What I want to know, and I've asked this before, is his salary was set, his budget was set at this amount, but yet he went over that amount by such a great deal. Who has their eye on this, on these budgets? You know, what they're budgeted for. Doesn't anybody say, wow, Iglesias passed his budgeted amount? Maybe we should go and see, talk to him, see what's going on. I mean, that should be normal thought process in anything that's going on. I don't know, I just, you know... I live my life how I can live it and what I can afford. Never get what you want. Get what you need, because we all would like a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll answer one question on the Bank of America. I'll check with the engineer with regards to the Bank of America, if it's going to... If it's causing that flooding for you as well?
No, it's not causing any flooding.
No, but if it does, okay. But if it does, I'll check to see what you basically... Because you were saying that if it does cause flooding, is that what you're saying?
No, no. What I said was that, all of a sudden, North Beverwood Road, down near Wyketh Building, is now all of a sudden being dug up.
Yeah, because the Bank of America purchased the property.
This was not a problem all these years. All of a sudden, they're working on it, and this building's... If it's related to the Bank of America in any way, the Bank of America...
All right. No, you're right, but we got to know that ahead of time before they build it, so I'll check with the engineer.
Pat, I just wanted to address your question, a couple of them that you had. One was in reference to legal fees. I did offer several suggestions tonight to the administration. Again, I hope they take it seriously that we could have some cost savings.
Here's what I'll say on legal fees. I did a spreadsheet, and you're going to find out that they're not as high as you think, because what was included in some of the legal fees was the $3.9 million in the escrow account of the township attorney for the flood victims, and I just did a three-year study on it, and it's nowhere near $4.3 million in those three years' time. You take the $3.9 million out, because those dollars were spent for the flood victims. Well, that was part of, you know... And I'm not saying in any way there, but I'm just trying to work on a breakout myself, so I'll share that with you.
Additionally, Pat, the other question you had was about keeping an eye on the budgetary process. You know, I did speak with our CMFO, and I told Anna that, you know, this is an ongoing process, but we have to have internal processes in order to measure things and accountability. And that was one of the reasons why I was instrumental in recommending that we approve the amount of money for the admin system to upgrade our computer system, so we can have better reporting on a council level, because we've never had accurate reporting over the years, because we didn't have the software in place. But now that Anna's been doing a great job on that, we anticipate we're going to get other reports, and we should know where we are at any given point, every council meeting. So, you know, that's very important. That's communication that we've had with the administration.
And just for the... So she won't say it, because it's about her, and she did a great job. The other day, or maybe it was this morning, it goes so fast. It might have been only yesterday. I went down there, and we have someone that's helping Mrs. Dorothy, she's the admin person, and she said, "Look, we have actually a report, and it's about the revenues." So Anna says, "I have good news." I says, "Is it about the revenue report?" She said, "Somebody already told you." This is how excited we get when we can deliver on a problem.
Just maintain your passion, because we've got to make some more cuts.
They always come back.
One more.
Katie Cassidy, 7 Stephen Terrace, Persibony, New Jersey. Hi, guys. So, looks like this is probably the most intense thing ever, so props. Yeah, yeah, let's lay out the thank you first. The one thing I do, and I know I mentioned this earlier this week, but one thing that I think is really important is getting this budget, maybe during the process, accessible to the public. I think it's a level of transparency that's important. I'm not saying, you know, you'd have to print out a copy and let everybody have a copy, but if you had one on display with draft on it, that you wouldn't then be able to, you know, photocopy or anything like that, you could just look at, at least, you know, then we kind of have an idea of where you guys are at and things like that. Another thing that I'm... From looking at it as briefly as I got to, I did see, you know, you have the budget request, and then you have the mayor's budget, and they look almost identical. And, you know, from talking to some of the people in the back, it sounds like there's a lot that happens to get that to the place that it's at on the paper. And I think it would be great for the public to see, you know, this is what is being requested, this is where the cuts are, and I think by putting these drafts in a public place, you're going to give the public an opportunity to see, you know, the hard work as it's going on and really get a better understanding of what's happening. Another thing, you know, obviously tough economic times, you know, we're going to be asking the taxpayers to tighten their belts a little here and there, and I think another thing that we should consider is asking the people who work for us to also tighten their belts just a little bit. Particularly, I think that anybody who's making over six figures could probably deal with a cap on their salary. They don't necessarily need a 2% increase. I think a 2% increase in itself might even be a little bit much. You know, if you weren't to increase... I mean, I only did half of the budget, and I did only the people who were making over $50,000, and I already got to $100-plus thousand. So the $226,000 that you guys are arguing over could probably be addressed by, you know, slightly reducing the increase in pay. And I'm not saying to take somebody's salary and decrease it. I'm saying just not to increase it as much as had been proposed. And that's... Those are my things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, question number one and two. We did have the budget out during the process, and people do have copies. So your first two questions, they're actually out there. During the process, there was a budget out here for people. They took it back. And in there, it shows what the mayor's... What he budgeted and what was asked for.
You're getting the later one now, because we worked on it from the beginning.
Okay, four.
I thought you said, "What's it feel like?"
Okay, see no one else come forward. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corriff?
Yes. This time, entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corriff?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.